This portion of our meeting to order, we're going to start with a work session and cover the following items. Item 2A, Discussion of Comprehensive Plan. Item 2B, Discuss Capital Improvement Plan. And item 2C, Discuss Fiscal Forecast Assumptions. This is like a pre-budget meeting. We are happy to have Councilmember-elect Kirkland with us at the table this evening. Although he won't be sworn in until May 10th, he will certainly be a part of the council that's voting on the budget, so we wanted him to have a front seat to all of the information. Council, I will share with you that Councilmember Jackson is under the weather and is not going to be attending today. And so, I'm not expecting him, but I believe we are expecting Mayor Protem Peterson, so he might, he may be joining us in a few minutes. You'll recall that we met a few weeks ago, and I will also bring to your attention that we have a full day together on May 12th, which is our big budget workshop. There is going to be a ton of information that you're going to get this evening. You know, everyone always asks me, "How long is council going to last?" And I've learned not to answer that question because I'm a really bad judge of exactly how long council is going to last. But I know how long this workshop's going to last because we have a hard stop at 6:00. And we will be vacating this room so that Colin and the team can flip it so that we can be ready for the council meeting at 6:30. So, we are going to go in the order of 2A, B, and C. Ms. Bills is going to be presenting the comprehensive plan. Mr. Jobe's going to present the capital improvement plan. And Ms. Waldron's going to present the fiscal forecast. You are, of course, I'm never going to discourage you from asking questions, but it would be extremely beneficial if we would let them get through and maybe make notes because we have the hard stop at 6:00. The city manager and I have agreed, Mr. Jobe thinks it's going to be no problem. Mr. Hoffman and I are a little concerned, we don't want to run out of time. But I'm giving you advance notice that at 5:30, we're going to start fiscal forecast because there's just some major information that we have to get through. If things go real smoothly and we have a little bit of time, we really would truly like to have a little bit of a visit about May 12th and talk about so that everybody's kind of clear of what they can expect on, on May 12th. So, whole lot of listening. The advantage of having the meeting in advance is instead of getting a ton of information and then trying to ask appropriate questions two minutes later, now you'll have an opportunity to hear a bunch of information. You'll be leaving with a copy of the presentation and the information, and it should put us all in a better position for May 12th. I want to mention that Councilmember-elect Lee, this meeting was originally on the 19th, and she was going to be able to attend, but she has a personal conflict, so she won't be attending the workshop tonight, but she's going to try to catch it on the streaming. And we will certainly get her a copy of the materials so that she's well-prepared for the meeting on the 12th. Again, with the workshop, please keep your mics off if you're not talking. When you do talk, you have to get obnoxiously close, or Colin will start getting texts from people that say, "We can't hear what you're saying," which means it's not a public meeting, and the public doesn't like that. With that, Mr. Hoffman, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mayor, for all of that, and thank you, council members, and Mr. Kirkland, for taking the time. Thank you also for April 5th, the workshop we had just a couple of weeks ago. You will, you'll see some of the themes that we talked about on April 5th, and some of the direction and feedback you provided on April 5th play out in what you'll see later in the draft CIP we're going to show you and the fiscal, and the fiscal forecast. This will work much like April 5th worked. We're not asking you for any final decisions here. We are giving you, as the mayor said, a lot of information, and to the extent you can give us some general feedback and good consensus direction like you did on April 5th, that would be, that would be terrific. And so, because we are a bit crunched for time, I'll ask Jennifer Bills to dive right into the comprehensive plan update. Council, you know from our discussions about how we do good strategic planning here in Bastrop, the comprehensive plan is foundational and fundamental to all of that and should be driving our thinking about capital improvements and how we pay for things, and, and so that's why we have that update conversation first. So, Jennifer, thank you.
Good afternoon. So, diving in, the first kind of questions people like to ask is, "Why do we have a comprehensive plan?" First, for, you know, functionality, it allows us to enforce zoning by state law. You have to have a comprehensive plan on file. It also allows the city to facilitate orderly growth and development. We like to talk about that a lot when we're looking at subdivisions and zoning. It identifies what we, what we want the community to look like, what that future shape over the next 20 years, what the citizenry, where they think this community should go. It also helps build consensus and a path forward between appointed and elected officials, city staff, and just the citizenry. And it provides a list of implementable actions. So, throughout the document, you'll see a lot of different goals and objection, objectives and actions that are things that we're actively working forward towards in all of our budgetary requests. So, the Texas Local Government Code sets up the adoption process for a comprehensive plan, so they have to be adopted and adhering, have to be reviewed by the municipality's public planning commission, and within our own charter, it's required that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend a comprehensive plan for the development of the city. So, our current comprehensive plan that's adopted is the 2036 comprehensive plan. Prior to that, we'd had a comprehensive plan adopted in 2001. There was a comprehensive plan steering committee set up by city council that oversaw the formation of the plan. It's a very large document, so as we go through this, if you have questions, you're always free to contact me. We can go over specific sections because it is a comprehensive document. But there was a lot of actual feedback and communication with the community while this was being constructed, and with all that feedback, the plan was adopted on November 22nd of 2016. So, within this plan, one of the things that was established was an amendment process. So, it's a living document, things do change over time. It does have a 20-year planning horizon is what we're looking at, from 2016 to 2036. With that, though, it does require some annual review by the Planning and Zoning Commission to make sure we're making progress towards the goals in the plan. There's a five-year update that's a little, little bit more of an overview of the plan that you, we'll be reviewing the accomplishments the city has done over the last five years, any inconsistencies in decision-making, and we'll have a summary of what those, kind of a new executive summary on what, where our progress is for the last five years. So, that's actually something that we're working on now with the Planning and Zoning Commission with that, and I'll talk about it later. We'll be doing a little bit more in-depth update of our future land use plan. And then, at the 10-year stage, we do a much deeper dive and look at all the components, and that'll be about five years from now. So, within the document, the city council established a vision statement and a mission statement for the city. So, the city of Bastrop is a diverse and welcoming community that celebrates our town character and energy, distinguished history, and unique environment. And then, what the, the mission was, the mission of the city of Bastrop is to provide efficient and proactive services that enhance our quality of life and achieve our vision. And both of these statements are reflected in the nine council focus areas. So, within the plan, there are nine chapters that provide community context, ideas of how the city will grow over the next 20 years, and specific sections that deal with those areas that the city should be focusing on. Specifically, we have three additional master plans that I, that go into more detail than the broad overview that's provided in the comprehensive plan. So, there's a transportation master plan, a parks master plan, and a cultural arts master plan that have all been adopted in the last five years that provide a more in-depth view of those topic areas. One of the chapters that obviously with the Planning and Zoning Commission we live in a lot is the future land use plan. So, this plan provides parameters for making future zoning decisions, future kind of infrastructure decisions. It provides some character attributes of the city, and has goals and objectives as the city continues to grow. With the adoption of the B-3 code, we adopted some new zoning districts. The plan really speaks specifically to our old zoning districts, so with our five-year update, we're also going to work with a consultant to develop a new future land use plan that more closely aligns to the B-3 code zoning districts. One of the things we're also going to look at in that future land use context is our ETJ. So, on the map, you'll see we have three different green areas. The darkest green area is our one-mile statutory ETJ that a city our size traditionally has. The medium green and lighter green areas are our voluntary ETJ, and the medium green is our Area A, which is the area that the city has regulatory authority for subdivision in. So, with the future land use update, we're also wanting to look at maybe extending those future land use categories into Area A in addition to the statutory ETJ. One of the other things, as we're looking at our future growth, that we're exploring now that we're, we have some areas that are wanting to annex into the city limits, this map, you'll see, this is our emergency service zones for the city and the surrounding areas. So, the blue area is the city's fire service territory, and then you have ESD number one and number two, the pink and yellow areas. You'll see, there's some green crosshatched areas on that map, and those are areas that we have under a development agreement, that those areas have to annex into the city once they start to develop. So, one of the things we'll be looking at is how to request that those areas in the emergency service districts be removed from those areas and placed into the city's fire service territory. Cities are allowed to petition the ESD when you're annexing those areas, so we have the ability to change those boundaries. One of the requirements is we have to compensate the ESD for the prorata share of their bonded and other indebtedness for that area, so it's best to do it before that area is developed because there's very little value prior to any development there. The benefits for this is that we'll have, one, city limits areas are served by city fires, so it's not confusing on whose territory you're in. The areas that are in the ESDs have a lower ISO rating, which affects your insurance rates. The city has a higher ISO rating, so future city residents would benefit from that ability to get better insurance. Also, it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be paying city taxes and an ESD tax. It would save money as a city resident to be under city fire service. Why we kind of are looking at this during this process is Val Verde, which we have under a development agreement that can annex at Final Platte. Burleson Crossing East is in the future commercial development. That is two, two-thirds in the, outside the city right now that we'll annex in, so we want that to be under one consistent area. Then we have all these other development agreements that are now looking to develop. The transportation master plan is one of the other chapters that we spend a lot of time talking about in the code or in the plan. There's many reasons we have a transportation master plan. It's to look at the network as a whole, to make sure that we're reducing congestion, promoting safe travel options. In our case, be it building complete streets to make sure we have those multimodal options for various transportation modes. And it also supports the land use and the economy of the city as a whole. So, one of the things with the adoption of the B-3 code is we also added an additional layer to, the first map is our major thoroughfare plan roads. We added the grid network, as we call it, and this is, the white lines you see on there are local city streets at a 720 grid level that provide additional neighborhood connectivity and multiple routes to get from point A to point B without having to get onto the major highways or other text dot roads. So, in the comprehensive plan, there's a series of goals and objectives. Throughout the plan, there are 96 total objectives that were adopted. These, each one of these objectives has corresponding actions and implementation steps that many of the, that will, all of our budget requests tie back to those objectives and the plan. So, some of the notable progress we've made over the last five years since the conference plan was adopted, we have a new water and wastewater treatment plants that are in the works. We've got several drainage projects that we've engineered, and the stormwater drainage manual was updated. One of the future things we're looking at is that we'll probably need to add water quality protections in the next couple of years as we become, it's called an MS4 city, and TCQ has some additional requirements once we reach the population of 10,000. In our housing and neighborhoods section, we've increased the number of tax credit housing for low and moderate income people in town. We have two new, two new developments that have gone in over the last five years. We also have allowed a broader diversity of housing types to be constructed with the adoption of the B-3 codes. For our land use and community image, one of the major objectives there was to look at the development codes. We adopted all new development codes in 2019 with the B-3 codes. With that, it also affected our transportation element that we've adopted grid and block structures that expand our connectivity options. We have a street maintenance program to make sure all the streets are properly maintained, and that we have a plan to bring everything up to the level that the citizens expect. We adopted 11 different cross-sections in the code that allow for different street cross-sections that provide multimodal and focus a little more on the pedestrian, so people have options besides cars. And we also have the carts participation that provides multimodal and other options to get around town. With all the new developments that have come in, there's been a lot of new open space and parkland that have been dedicated, along with new trails in those developments to provide recreation space. We also have the new recreation programming over the last two years. With that, there's also needs to address future operational capacity as, as we expand those services. And the cultural arts and tourism, we've seen a lot of activity downtown with the Main Street rehabilitation project. We've adopted the cultural arts master plan. The BEDC and the Art Institute partnered to bring that, the Art Institute to downtown. And we also hold the distinction of being a music-friendly community, a scenic city, a bird city, and I left off a tree city. They made sure to point that out to me. Within the plan, there was a short-term work program that was adopted that provided 50 priority actions. This was created by the comprehensive plan steering committee survey, also based off the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission when this plan was created in 2016. So, these, many of these priority actions are still valuable, still things we're working towards. With the five-year update, we'll look at this and do some, maybe some reprioritization during that amendment process. This will be led by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They're, they're responsible for updating the plan, making those recommendations to council, and they've taken that role very seriously and are very involved in making sure that the comp plan is relevant and responding to citizens' needs. Within the comp plan, it also looks at the capital improvement program and established a framework in the plan that established five community values-based criteria, and then five organizational-based criteria, based off of budgeting, regulatory compliance, and project leveraging constraints. With the current CIP, this ranking has not been applied because most of the items in the CIP are continuing items for, for master plans and projects that were already started in previous year's CIPs. With that, moving forward, and I think you'll talk about this more on May 12th, there will be a recommendation to create a future bond election committee to look at how to establish the projects for debt-funded projects. And we'll recommend that the, this is a starting point, this framework will be the starting point for ranking those projects for the bond election. So, moving forward, so this year, we're working on a new parks and recreation master plan, a new future land use plan, and a five-year comprehensive review. We're also working on, it's a Loop 150 corridor study. This is something that Campo is taking the lead on, and it'll actually be funded through Campo, but it'll take a lot of staff time and resources to work on that. We also have an annexation plan, and with that annexation plan, we're looking at how, to make sure the ESD transfer is done properly. And we're also working on a drainage master plan and a water master plan, so we're doing a lot of, a lot of planning this year. Looking at next fiscal year, there are requests for updating the transportation master plan, which would be an update of the 2017 plan, as discussed at the last meeting, looking to establish a way to make, capture that proportional share from new development to make sure that development pays for the traffic they generate, and look at specific intersection improvements that council identified at that meeting. We'll also propose a facilities master plan that will help identify future space and facility needs throughout the entire city government network. We already know that as the population grows, the need for police and fire services and even at City Hall, those, those needs grow. We're looking at a downtown master plan and then a wastewater master plan for next year. And then, moving forward, things that were mentioned in the conference of plan but haven't been identified in a budget yet are a Pine Forest Unit 6 redevelopment plan, historic property survey or historic guidelines for downtown, and then a fiscal sustainability model. So, those would be for future, future projects. Any questions?
Good job, Ms. Bills. I appreciate you covering the basics. One quick question that I had, just for thinking, and I know there's not a perfect answer, but Mr. Hoffman, in your experience, that bond committee that's, will be comprised of citizens, is that like five people, 25 people? What's, what's a good-size committee to work with?
Okay. Well, you asked about my experience. My experience would be nine, 10, 11 people.
Okay.
Is what I'm particularly used to. That is obviously ultimately up to the city council. You're, you're looking for getting a, a cross-section of the community. It's also my experience that that, that committee, once they've made a recommendation on the bond election to the city council, that some of those members, perhaps a subset of those members, could on their own decide to become a political action committee that actually is out promoting the bonds, because of course, we can't do that, but a group of citizens could. And Jennifer mentioned this, that on May the 12th, when we do our, our other pre-development, pre-budget development planning session, we'll, we'll talk more specifically about the plan for a bond election. What council has talked about generally before is targeting November of calendar year '23, and that is relevant to our next subject when Trey goes over the, the capital plan. The capital plan assumes a bond election in November of '23. So, this, this, this May, May 12th, council will ask you to consider a, a charge to that committee, a list of duties that you'll ask that committee to take on. You'll want to give them a, a deadline so that in a year or so from now, you get a recommendation from them that is pretty precise and specific, recommend how, how the bond election should be organized around propositions and how detailed the proposition listings ought to be. And as Jennifer just said, you'll, you'll ask them to justify their recommendations, and, and our suggestion would be that they look at the criteria that are laid out in the comprehensive plan for, for doing that.
I appreciate you speaking to that. It's going to be a really important committee. I would think it goes without saying that you require residency within the city limits, and I think we ought to, it would be helpful if we all kind of put some thought into the right folks, and it would not be elected officials, correct?
I would think so.
Some, some elected and some not, or not elected officials.
No, I, I, I would think you're looking for, you're looking for citizens who, you want this to be a grassroots kind of effort.
Because council be involved in ultimately deciding what goes forward with the bond.
That's exactly. Council and Planning and Zoning Commission too, right? And that's, that's another entity to consider in that decision-making mix.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Council, any questions? Mr. Kirkland, any questions for Jennifer? All right. Well, look at that, we finished 2A. Good job, Ms. Bills. Moving on to 2B. No pressure, Mr. Jobe, but she did great.
Turn this on. All right, first mistake. Forgot to turn on the mic. So, just to, just to point out, as we get started, as you recall, we had the same conversation last year, we talked about capital projects, and what we're going to go over tonight is not all the capital projects that we continue to work on, but these are the capital projects that are going to need allocation of funding for next year as we move forward. So, what we have-
Trey?
Yes, sir.
You gave just a briefest of introduction there. I wasn't here for the last year discussion. So, these are things that we're going to see on May 12th in a roll-up of things that are funded, or what is that?
Yes, sir. Yeah. We, you will see all these items again on May 12th, and then if we need to, we can recap on existing projects.
Well, and I'll, I'll add that on May the 10th, the, the day you're sworn in, on that council agenda, we're scheduled to, to present our, our quarterly report for the second quarter, and that will provide a pretty detailed update on the status of all existing capital projects.
Okay. So, and what you're going to show us today, what would you say we're supposed to come away with? Like, what, what are we learning today?
So, what we're learning today is, is information based off of previous discussions, previous studies that have been done, recommendations for capital improvements, and then the amount of funding that's going to need to be allocated to, to take care of those projects. And then Tracy, after me, and I don't want to sell her thunder, will come back and show you how we're going to pay for it all. I'm going to show you the expense, tell you why it's important, and she'll explain.
So, let me, let me help with a little bit of this. Really what it, this list didn't just, they just didn't figure out last night what to put on the list. These things have all been discussed at some porter fashion. There, Tracy will discuss ways to fund it, but for what Trey's going to go over, what he's really looking for, each one of these projects represents a lot of taxpayer dollars and a ton of staff time. If there's one of these projects that council's like, "I don't care how we're paying for it, that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard of," they don't want to work on it anymore. So, they're, they're, they're looking for the feedback of, "I don't want to see that project again, not going to support that project because that would be a really good thing to know now," because if it's not going to be funded, it completely changes what Tracy's going to recommend. It completely changes what their work plan is going to look like. So, it's kind of a, once again, this is, this is what we're thinking as we're preparing a budget, council. So, if you've got really strong thoughts, really strong thoughts, or if you're like, "Well, gosh, if we're doing Project A and Project B, I really think we should put them together and add a little bit and make a Project C," this is a good time to give them that kind of feedback.
Absolutely. Perfect. And I'll, I'll just add one little piece to all of that. Trey will give you information on our recommended funding source, right? Later, Tracy will tie all that together and will give you some, lay out some assumptions and show you some affordability projections, and, and she'll, she'll define all of that. And the only reason I take the time to point that out, I mentioned earlier that we're, we're largely here reacting to the feedback we received from you guys on April 5th. One of those pieces of feedback is a potential way to use economic development sales tax funding. And so, we are, we are showing you a pretty aggressive approach to how we use the 4B dollars, specifically as it regards building that transportation network, that backbone you guys talked about on April 5th, funding the design work for the intersection improvements. We are targeting 4B dollars for all of that, and I, and I also wanted to point out, none of that has been discussed with EDC staff or the board. We do acknowledge that'll be an important part of the discussion over the next several weeks. be an important part of the discussion over the next several weeks. But you guys are the first to see this, this particular approach, as it regards those 4B dollars.
I have a question, just to go along with what the mayor said, and we have not seen everything Trey's about to show us, just a question about when to ask a question. So, let's say we go through this whole project, and there's a project I don't see on here that I would like to. Would you like me to bring that now, or wait till the 12th, and then ask questions more on the 12th?
Now, tell us today.
Okay, I was just curious, if, I went all the way through and not know when to say, "Hey, you forgot something," so, just asking.
All right, Mr. Job, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is the drainage projects, just a real quick overview. This is our riverbank stabilization, our Gills Branch flood mitigation project. These are actually projects that we previously applied for grants for, did not receive. We've now applied for a different set of grants, with a different match, which is why we're back here today, to talk about the allocation of money. The original match for hazardous mitigation was 10%, because it was federally funded. This is a state program, it's at 25%. The riverbank stabilization, if you've been, if you've spent any time walking up and down Fisherman's Park, you'll notice there's some culverts from the 2016 floods. They stick out about 20 feet outside of the bank. That is bank that has been lost. This project will actually promote stopping that erosion, right, and protecting those city assets. And the Gills Branch flood mitigation project was actually funded by council previously, and, and the design was, for the drainage work, is at 100%. What we will do now is go back and look at the utility relocations, perform that engineering, and again, apply for a grant, and this would be the city's required match. Next up, we have facility, facility projects. What we were looking for when we say Fire Station 3, that was also a submitted hazardous mitigation project, it was not funded. If you were, well, the only one that was funded is Agnes. We'll talk about that a little bit later, but that was one of the projects we submitted for. And what we're asking here for in that million dollars is truly to, to not lose an opportunity. We have a lot of development that comes in every week, we're meeting with people with lots of property, we need to be able to negotiate and make a deal, and have a fire station on the west side of the river. So, that's really what this is about. Chief Rosales is great, he understands the rules, he knows how close they need to be, pretty much the, the exact location's not nailed, nailed down, but we do want to be flexible, and that is what the million dollars is for. The facilities master plan that you see there is actually going to help us with the rest of the facilities, and the police department, the city hall, we are all, we are all growing, and, and it's, and we need to expand. That's going to help us thinking that through, as far as location, size, and it'll also help with the programming of the fire station itself, whether it needs to have an EMS component or something of that nature.
Hey, just really quick, I want to, I want to go backwards for a second. The riverbank stabilization piece at $15 million?
Yes, sir.
Is that just city limits? Is that specifically the river within the city limits? Does it start at?
It starts at Bryant, and it ends, and I, we have some engineers here that I think give me a better answer, but we were actually probably stopped right at the end of Fisherman's Park, Ferry Park.
Okay, so it wouldn't go beyond Fisherman's Park?
No.
It would stop there? Okay, thanks.
Right. Again, the, the communications antenna, that's pretty simple. As we continue to grow to the west, we have one antenna in town that actually does the AMI meter reading, so, so there's a propagation that it was performed when we installed the meters. As we continue to grow west, we need to add additional antenna west of the river, so we can continue to read meters automated. So, it's just an expansion of the current service. The parks projects, if you'll notice, there is, this is something that we talked about last year, but we are now funding this year. This will replace parkings and shade structures and things of that nature. This is something the Parks Board will also be tasked with, you know, if they want to add new shade structures or help with locations, this will be something they will have some funding, again, to make those improvements.
Okay, I have a project, and I don't, I, I think it goes here, but I don't know where it goes, but y'all can decide where it goes. At one point, we had talked about restrooms near Ferry Park, public restrooms, so I don't know if that's part of parks, I don't know if that's Main Street, I don't care, but that's, it's, I, I think that's something we have discussed before, and, and public restrooms in that Main Street area, I think would be a, a good idea, particularly with the loop now. You, you, so, I'd like to throw that one in.
Well, I, depending on the scope of that restroom, that's, I'm going to suggest we look at a separate line item for that, because those kinds of restroom facilities can get awfully expensive, and would, I'm not sure, an annual year's appropriation, as it's laid out here, would be sufficient to cover it, so.
Yeah, I wasn't saying you can squeeze it in the budget, I just didn't know what list it would go on, and so I'm offering it up as a, a project I would like us to consider.
Right, okay.
Is anybody opposed to that?
No, I, I'm with you on that, because especially, like you said, with the loop now, now we're putting people on a loop, a three-mile loop, I think it's what it is, and no, no restrooms, or not, a very little restrooms, especially in that Ferry Park area, so that would be a, and then, I know we put one at Fisherman's Park, that new one you just dropped the building in, that would, you probably have numbers still. I'm sure they've doubled since then, but.
And the last one we did was at Delgado. So, we put a small, single restroom unit at Delgado. That may, that may work for Ferry Park, it's pretty small.
But yeah.
I think the loop's only a mile and a half, you have to go around twice for a 5K, but it doesn't matter how, if you, if you've got a stroller and a kid, it's nice to have a pla, a public restroom that's available all the time. I know how, I'm, I'm trying to not look at Curtis Hancock, because I know how hard it is to try to keep them clean. Public restrooms are really, really tough. The public is not always treating their facilities nicely, but it would be nice to have it as an amenity.
Yeah, and better than the alternative. At least you have a, one spot to clean it versus multiple.
Something that I actually failed to mention earlier, it just came back to my memory, is the drainage projects. So, will also be an allocation that you didn't see here today for miscellaneous drainage projects. Some of those will be opportunities that will come out of the Drainage Master Plan. So, as we continue that, I think it's, finishes at the end of this month, it'll have some local suggestions, it'll have some big CIP projects, but we will have a line item for added here in the future. Next, we'll move to transportation projects, and I want to talk a little bit about the difference between these three programs. The street maintenance program is what you see, what happened in Hunter's Crossing last year, is really keeping the good streets good, is kind of how we say that, is a chip seal coating, some type of seal coat. And then, the street rehabilitation program will actually address the pavement itself. So, it will be, there may be some subgrade work, it'll probably be light, but you'll mainly just replace the pavement. It will not be a full street reconstruction. In our mind, when we move to the last category, that's actually going to be a full street reconstruction, and we'll talk about this as part of that bond committee. That is where you take the opportunity to leverage things together, you change the water lines, you change the sewer lines, you add sidewalk, you make sure there's curb and gutter, and it meets a whole new cross-section of roadway. Where we'll start with the street maintenance program, we've actually bumped that up a little bit, $800,000 a year. That's what we spent the first year, it has varied off and on, but if you recall, we're finishing a pavement condition index, that also, we finished, I believe, in May or June, and that will give us, this number could change, because it could, maybe all the work that we've done is not enough. But we think $800 is our, our guess.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just giving everybody the heads up, I'm really going to be looking for the pavement condition index, and I'm going to be wanting to see numbers of the first pavement condition index, now the updated pavement condition index, how much money did we spend, where did we spend that money, so that we can see, a C street, that we put money into, stayed a C, or went to a B, or, or whatever, but we have an opportunity to see data that we haven't ever had before. So, I'm really looking forward to that PCI being done.
That is the goal. Yes, sir.
Can, can you give an example? So, you've got, you've got street maintenance, street rehab, and street reconstruction. Do you have an example off the top of your head of what street would qualify under each one of those?
I do. So, the street maintenance programs is something, like I said, we just did in Hunter's Crossing, we did in Riverside Grove as well this year. The score was somewhere in the range of a 75, you know, to a 90, right? So, they come in, they just chip seal to keep the water, keep it tight, to make sure that it, it doesn't deteriorate quickly, and that happens about every seven years at a minimal, to just put a seal coat on. The street real, but rehabilitation is somewhere closer to when you're about 14 to 20 years in, and you need to come in and rework the pavement for a better routing surface. And tho, those particular streets, Old Austin Highway is one, an example of one that we planned to do.
Which one, I'm sorry?
Old Austin Highway will be one. That's actually, if you recall, we, last year, we issued $3.6 million. $1.6 million of that was allocated to Old Austin Highway. We opened, we went ahead and moved forward with the, with the engineering at the last council meeting, and now we'll move to some other streets, which are like Linden, Mesquite, I can't, I don't have the list right in front of me, and for some reason, I'm losing my memory on where they're exactly at, but those streets will be reconstructed, and this is actually an additional $4 million to that original 3.6.
You said reconstruction, did you mean rehabilitation?
Rehabilitation, sorry. That additional rehabilitation, and the, and the rehab, thank you for correcting me, and the rehabilitation, because this is important, I do that all the time, the rehabilitation's important, it's going to be based on the score, and it's going to be based on traffic count. So, we want to make sure where there's a lot of traffic, that gets taken care of, and it is the stopgap, if you will, till we get to street reconstruction, where we'll issue that big bond issuance, the committee will be involved, it'll be a large amount, and then everything will be under construction, which will include the bike lanes, the sidewalks, right?
See, in my mind, like Water Street is a reconstruction.
Water Street is on the list.
Yeah.
It is.
Councilmember Plunkett, you were going to ask a question, did you?
Actually, it was answered. I was asking about where the Austin, the Austin, how a project would fit, just as a point of reference.
Yes, also, again, this is, this is where those drainage opportunities we can leverage. So, I, I expect that the Drainage Master Plan will be completed, you know, the Water Master Plan is, is short, will be completed here shortly. We also have a list of, of how old our wastewater lines are, we'll be able to leverage all of that together, make the drainage improvements, make the utility improvements, and do a complete re-street construction, street reconstruction during that bond issuance time in 2024. To continue, go ahead.
One, one, one last thing. So, I know that they just went back and worked on Church Street again. So, we completely paved that three to four years ago, or maybe my timing might be off, and then we repaired it, and now we're repairing it again. So, is it something that we need to change in our repair process, since this is the second or third time that we've repaired that street?
I think that's a drainage issue, it's a localized drainage issue. There, there needed to be some improvements in how that water gets away from the street, is my opinion, it sits in that corner, and that wasn't part of the original scope of the project. So, sometimes, things can be short-sighted when you work for a city, and we focus on just the roadway that's in front of us, when a more comprehensive approach probably could have been used to budget for all the drainage work down Buttonwood, would have solved the problem that you see that's reflecting on Church.
And then, the, the new list that Mayor Schrader was just talking about, that will help us identify, maybe just not patching the street, we can fix the drainage on the street and get, do, do more things to it. And I know Curtis's team has really been, at least from what I've seen, the, the repairs have been a, a lot better in the past four to five years, to where you don't have to go by the guys walking behind the truck, shoveling, shoveling asphalt out. We should consider on, on these maintenance plans, and I'm sure you got that on your list, to maybe do an entire section of street, instead of individual potholes over and over and over again, and that seems to be what, look.
Sure.
Buttonwood, Water Street, those streets that we're having to redo now, instead of-
Buttonwood is also on that list.
Yeah.
For rehabilitation. And when I said there would be no drainage work performed, let me just clarify that. If the ditches need to be regraded, we're going to create, we're going to regrade those ditches. We want to make sure that the water gets off of that surface, and if, I would like to add a, I guess a small caveat, that if there's pipes that need to be upsized there, we should probably do that, too. But when I say we weren't going to do drainage work, I meant we wouldn't do large, massive drainage work all the way to the river, kind of, kind of drainage work. But yes, there should be something at local that needs to happen, that could be done pretty quickly, to keep the water off the road. Specific projects we talked about, I think we got offered a hug at the last April 5th meeting, is the Blakely Street Extension, that's from Mr. Clare. This is, we also applied for this in the Hazardous Mitigation Grant, and it, it was denied, did not meet the criteria, we could not meet the Low to Moderate Income Index that was required for that grant, so we're bringing this back. What we have before you is an estimate, but it's a estimate from about two years ago, so, but it's about $6 million, and that is extending Blakely Lane from where it currently stops, and tying it all the way back into Old Austin Highway. Agnes Street is the Hazardous Migration Grant that was actually awarded. We will talk about that a little bit later, and, and we are expecting the funding to be released in, in late May, early June. So, now we're going to allocate the city's portion and move forward with the project. The Old Iron Bridge, we've talked about this quite a bit, we continue to up this, we've actually have applied for a, another grant, and it has to do with, it's an infrastructure grant, it's currently, it's federally funded. Our updated estimated cost is around $19 million, and the city's match year is $3 million. I say match is probably not the best word to use, but the local participation is going to be $3 million, so it may not be all a match, maybe some may be environmental work and things of that nature, but our expectation is to spend $3 million.
And our, our chances of getting the grant funding improve with the level of local participation that we provide?
Yes.
The, the particular grant that we've applied through, applied for through that contract with Garver, that council approved several weeks ago, there's actually not a grant requirement, but good strategy is that we contribute a significant portion of local share to make it more attractive.
Council, I'll just remind you that that grant was due on April 15th, and we had 10 letters of support that went in with that grant. I'm still working with, Senator Cornyn sent his letter, I don't have a letter from Senator Cruz, but his office has been in contact with me, and they can continue to post the letter to the application file that we have, and we, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, we're hope, that we'll hear by August. That's not one of those that take forever, so hopefully, we get some good news on that in August.
Thanks for that, that's what I was going to ask about, was where we were in the process with that, so thanks for sharing that.
So, I believe you're, if you're qualified in August, and then they'll, you'll move into the second round.
Yeah, I don't think you will get the check on August 15th.
Just clarifying.
But we would like to continue to clear the hurdles, so I appreciate, I, we got Senator Cornyn, Senator Eckhart, Congressman McCall, Congressman Cloud, Representative Sirier, we, Betty Voits from CapCog, the county judge poppy, we, BEDC chair, it was, and I haven't ever done those before, so I didn't know how many, you know, how many was good, and I was talking to one of the people that worked for McCall, and he was like, "Wow, you got all the way to 10, that's pretty good." So, I'm still bugging people to get some more of those, but I appreciate staff putting a ton of time together, and Garver's consulting, we picked them because they've successfully helped communities get those kind of grants before, so it's truly been a major team effort, and we appreciate the support from the elected officials.
The next, next up is, is business park development, there's no number there, we will need to talk a little more about that later, but if you'll recall, the, the EDC recently, and the city also recently approved the zoning, showed roughly out of the streets, we know there's going to be continued development there, it's also in line with the policy to have a thriving park in a few years, so we want to make sure we got that line item in there, and it will continue to grow as, as we move forward. South Street is actually a connection from Lover's Lane to the unopened portion of South Street. If, if you're familiar with as you're heading into the business park, just behind the jail, that is South Street, some of it is not built out, so we would actually leave Lover's Lane to a crossing above grade, over the railroad tracks, and then make our way back down into South Street, and complete that roadway, and that, it's a pretty significant project. It actually will probably take off about 30% of the local traffic, based on some of our traffic impact analysis that have been performed with the, if you recall, that's where the, the new movie studio will be, there's going to be some traffic impacts related to that movie studio. This brings that intersection down to an acceptable level. Intersection at 71 in Lover's Lane.
Mayor Pro Tim Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Trey, I'll be keeping in mind that if that road comes off from the industrial park over the railroad tracks, it'll come in about the south end of MLK, and as narrow as MLK is, we need to keep that in consideration, because that street's definitely has to be widened.
Yes, sir. We, and we will, I think that is actually what will be talked about when technology drive probably happens. If you recall, we talked about technology drive. Technology Drive probably happens. If you recall, we talked about Technology Drive, South Street, Technology Drive, and MLK will all kind of blend in together in that intersection, and that's, that's absolutely, will be addressed.
But that would be a way to keep, well, unless you have a secret, and there may be another slide, I don't know any other way to fix Lover's Lane intersection. So that, South Street, that solves that, and it keeps the majority of the traffic from going through the residential neighborhood, because really what folks, what everybody's looking for is get into 71, and get into a lighted intersection. Because if traffic's really light, it's not that big deal, and you can go through, and the neighborhood doesn't care if it's one or two cars now and then. But if it is heavy traffic time, you're trying to get to a controlled intersection.
That's right. And if, and if you're familiar, and I know everyone in this room is, with how you leave Lover's Lane, you have to loop back onto the north end of MLK, and you can't miss it at all.
You have to leave cookie crumbs and hope that you can find your way home.
That's right. And South Street is actually an opportunity to go straight to Jackson, to 95, which is why we think it's a better route.
This also helped the, the, Business Park needs a second exit, correct?
It will also.
This is what we're, it solves lots of problems.
I just want to make sure that was still part of that.
And, and the reason South Street was selected, it was, because it's actually a long enough runway, if you will, to get the elevation that we need of 24 and 1/2 feet, to make sure that a train doesn't hit it, right? And then we can make our way back down.
So you don't have to have a perfect 3D architectural rendering, that's not an expectation at all. But for May 12th, it would be helpful if we could have a map of this is where we're talking about, and this is where it would go, and we can point to it, but just a map with the limits of current thought process of limits for that, I think would be helpful. Because it's kind of a new concept.
Yeah. And do we have the rights away we need for all that? I'm trying to think of how much of that's private property versus...
The only private property is actually in the park itself.
I have a feeling we could get a good deal on that.
We can certainly ask about it, yeah. Again, those intersection improvements that we talked about, and April 5th, they've all kind of been combined. It's about $230,000 to review all of the intersections we mentioned that night. And just to kind of recap on what Jennifer talked about, we're really looking at updating the traffic, the master transportation plan. That will include some of this traffic impact analysis, and, and we'll probably have one engineer, but three separate projects, if you will, so that they all intermingle and work together.
That's all well and good, but we don't want to wait for every I dotted and every T crossed, and 27 years later, the intersections ought to be carved out, let's do the, because we know some of that's right, free right turn lanes, there's some stuff that can be done, let's rock and roll.
That's right. And, and that's how I should have said it. And that, that is, that is the plan, and while they're separate, we'll immediately dive into the intersection improvements, start working on the traffic impact analysis, that those improvements will be a part of, and then at the end, finish up the, the master transportation plan.
Counsel, are you okay with what he just laid out, intersections for, we got to have a plan, but some of it, we already know what the answer is, let's, let's go.
We plan to jump on that October 1st.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
The Emil Neighborhood Regulating Plan, this is related to the discussions that we've current, we've had recently about the Emil Multicultural Center. It's our opportunity for us to partner with the school district, it's an opportunity for partners with the, with, with some good local organizations, and it really kind of preserves that story of the Emil School. We thought it was a great project, everybody was on board. This is the funding that will establish where the streets go, where the drainage needs to be. It's a real high-level neighborhood regulating plan that'll tell you, basically, where to put your best spot for a site, so that we'll have a nice, clean site that's ready to go whenever they're ready to build that building. It'll also be an opportunity for us to understand the funding requirements that we need, when we want to build those capital improvements, like the streets and the drainage improvements. So this is just a study, survey, and things of that nature.
I don't want to make you flip slides back, and Counsel, I'm interested in your feedback, but on the very first, on the drainage projects, for me, Gill's Branch is more important than the, than the Riverbank stabilization, because Gill's Branch has homes underwater. And that's why, in the drainage criteria, that's why we increased the criteria for Gill's Branch. And, and I think the, the fact that that drainage watershed is impacting residents that live in homes now, they're both great, and we want them both done, but if push comes to shove, I think that Gill's Branch is a higher priority than the Riverbank stabilization. And hopefully, we can get them both. Mayor Protem Peterson?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I totally agree with that. And I'm just wondering, just thinking about the stabilization project, wouldn't LCR want to chime in on a little bit on that?
No, sir, this is, that's actually going to take a permit from the Corps of Engineers. Contrary to belief, LCR really doesn't regulate what happens in the river, unless it relates to the water that you're selling you. So the, the Corps of Engineers will actually review that project and make sure it's appropriately done.
But he's right, that it's, it's going to be another entity that's...
It doesn't hurt to discuss it with them.
Oh, yeah.
I agree, yes. The, and just to, just to touch back on those drainage projects, if the grant's not received for the Riverbank or the Gill's Branch, again, that funding will be available, unless we just are interested in pulling the Riverbank project altogether. Okay. We talked about the Transportation Master Plan, I think.
So should we be doing a pecking order? I mean, I, okay. That's what I was wondering, because the Riverbank, to me...
We'll, we'll talk about it with, let Tracy say where she thinks it's going to be funded from, and then on May 12th, we're hoping that it doesn't come to, I'm picking this one over that one.
Yeah.
I doubt that you need to do that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So that's not really for tonight, this is my favorite project.
All right, yeah. And I think Tracy's going to give you information that, that shows you this is affordable.
So you think this is a list of projects, you think we can afford, not a list of all possible projects, and we need to pick half of them, or whatever.
It's, it's what we can afford, based on some assumptions, we're going to run past you here in a few minutes.
I would say, though, that we've assumed grant funding.
That's right.
For, for those two projects.
And that if we don't get the grants, that will change things.
Lastly, we have a, go ahead.
There's a reason Tracy's going last.
Just to clean up better.
So before we move off of transportation, I've been studying the safety indexes of our train and railroad crossings. And we have one railroad crossing that happens to be in the middle of a high school, that is the only one in our city that doesn't have a gate, a safety gate. And so it might even be paid for with grants or other things, but it's something that we need to resolve.
Go ahead. If you're interested in that being a project, we have done a little preliminary work on that, reached out to UP, have not heard back from them yet, but happy to...
To what?
To Union Pacific Railroad. And I, and I think there's an opportunity, there is a pre-engineering requirement before you can achieve a quiet zone.
I'm not even talking about that. This is exclusively about a gate for the high school, and establishing a safe intersection there.
That is on private property, we don't own that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's a BISD property, so BISD needs to pay for that.
Okay.
Correct.
Well, just because of, line that parade up, they actually have gates that they lock, so you can't cross that road during school time and things. They have those little, like a cattle gate that they come and padlock, so you can't really...
That's close to the...
Right. I mean, they, that road isn't really just public driving all the time, and they actually, they guard that pretty well, you know, just from being able to use it. So they have locks, they have gates that they lock, so you can't drive over the road tracks.
Those gates are on Hill Street?
Those gates are in their parking lots. So it's, it's between the stadium, and if you go over the, go over to the high school, so if you drive over the road tracks, there's a gate on both sides they can lock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't seen that either.
Well, that's because you don't have high school kids, and you don't drive there, and get to the gate, and turn around, and come out. And so that's one of those where the school has protected...
The ones on Hill Street, I do have a high school.
So that's right, and they're very similar to that. So the school has protected, to Councilmember Rogers' point, has protected that intersection, but from a railroad standpoint, they know there's not arms coming down. But it's private property, it's school property, and that's how they protect that intersection and that railroad crossing.
Okay. Cemetery projects. You'll notice that there's no funding amount there, but there is some interest in developing Section 9 in the cemetery. We are waiting on a recommendation from the actual board. Once we get that recommendation, and we understand what the amounts are, then we'll, we'll bring that forward.
What's Section 9, I'm sorry?
Up the hill and to the right.
So the, so the portion...
Top of the hill?
Top of the, top of the hill to the right.
Kind of over the hill, and to the right.
Would that include, or have we already done the erosion control top of that hill?
Erosion control, I'm just wondering about that.
So that doesn't include, this is separate from that?
To the right, not to the left, to the right.
On the east end of the cemetery.
Far to the right.
It's just an, it's an undeveloped section that we're looking at developing and adding plots, and...
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then moving forward to electric projects, Master Power and Light has a, a five-year study that's performed, a study that's performed every five years. Out of that study, it produces capital improvements, upgrades to the system, or large maintenance items that need to be done to maintain the system. And we have, the plan here is to alternate engineering one year, and then construction the next. And we think that's an appropriate amount to get that done. The fiber optic network, this is one we're probably going to talk a little more and a lot more about here in the future. We have a draft feasibility study. We have not seen that final yet, but we do expect to have it before the 12th at your next meeting, and happy to have those engineers come in and present. We do think it's a great opportunity for the city as a whole. I can give you just some high-level stuff that I've read in the draft, and it's a very viable business to, to move into. And what you see here is phases one and two. So it's, it's the backbone network, if you will, some of the poles, some of the underground, the loop itself, but you won't actually be the internet service provider. So what we would do is, if you think of it as a utility, we'd be a wholesale provider. So the AT&amp;Ts of the world, or fiber light, would come to us, connect to our lines, and actually enter into the home and be the internet service provider. And then the recommendation is that we do, that's how we start. And we lease space on those fiber optic lines to larger companies, and has a decent profit margins right of way, with return on investment about three to five years, while we're still making the decision if we actually want to be internet service provider right to your TV or your computer.
Thank you, Mr. Jobe, you got there. You called it fiber optic network, and, and the general public has heard us refer to that as broadband, and I just wanted to make sure people knew we were talking about, it's the same project.
It is the same project.
And that we're coordinating with the Connected Nations and the county, you might want to mention that as well.
The, the county study was absolutely the basis, and our engine, and our, our team that's doing the study has been in contact with them, yes. They're, we, we are working with the county.
So just maybe to state the obvious, this would be a significant project for the city to take on in, in any scenario. What you just heard Trey said is, the, the idea that the, the draft capital plan assumes is that we would manage the construction of that backbone, and that, and the distribution network. We are, the phrase that people in the business use is the middle mile. So this would fund the construction of the middle mile. What's not shown in the CIP would be Phase 3, that, that last mile. And I know I'm repeating a little bit of what Trey just said, but I think it, I think it's important for you guys to understand. The consultant, and again, we, we've seen a draft of their report, we haven't seen the final report yet, we should get that by the end of April, is actually recommending that we, we not be the ISP, the internet service provider, because of all of the staffing and the administrative work that that would entail. We would need to develop a 24/7 customer service presence, right? We could do that, or we could lease what we build to someone who is already in the business and, and has that 24/7 customer service capability. What we've resolved with the consultant is, we don't have to make that decision just yet. And so, and irrespective of that final decision, it does behoove us to move towards building that, that fiber network. And that'll take a few years to do. But even that will have some staffing implications for the city that we'll talk more about when we, we talk about operating budget. This will be a, not only an extensive capital project that extends out into the ETJ, and that's another big part of this. When we went into this idea from the very beginning, what was attractive was it allowed us to expand our, the footprint that BPNL currently has, in, in order to get out into the ETJ. This does assume a lot of partnerships, there would be a lot of stakeholders in the mix. The mayor mentioned the county and their study work, and their relationship with Connected Nation. The school district would need to be a partner here, other service providers as well. There's a whole bunch of, of data management benefits that would come to the city from having the opportunity to avail ourselves of this network. That's one of the things we're, we would build, be building here. This has implications for our ability to do things like, for example, remotely managed traffic signals in the future. And so we, all of that can be explored more. We, if, if it's okay with you guys, we could spend a couple of hours on this alone on May 12th, because there's a lot more about this that counsel will ultimately want to understand. But, good news is, this is, it is very apparently and comfortably feasible with a, a very reasonable payback period for, for the city. And, and I'll just say one other thing, and that's assuming no grants, right? And, and we, we know what has happened with the legislature here, and with the governor's office establishing an office that's around making sure broadband is made available to rural areas in, in particular. There should be really no difficulty in successfully finding grants to apply for, but we're taking a very conservative approach here. We're not, we're not assuming that just, just yet.
As we move into water projects, this is exactly what we talked about on April the 5th. This is the updated and revised for the, for the water plant itself, and some of the facilities that go along with it. And what you have below that, where you see the blanks, is actually the list of all of the projects from the Water Master Plan. And if you remember, we talked about issuing another $21 million in debt to manage those projects over the next three years. It's not that there aren't more projects, we think that's all willing to spend in the next few years, is 21 million.
We're thinking that's enough, so keep going.
Also, let's move on to the wastewater projects. This is, if you'll recall, the wastewater treatment plant Phase 2. Maybe a little discouraging and encouraging, as we begin to ramp up the, the wastewater treatment plant number three that's being built west of the river. And as we're waiting to decommission, we realize with all the growth that's coming in, this plant that we are about to finish will be at 70 to 75% capacity the, the day we turn off the old plants east of the river. The TCEQ has a rule at 70 and 90, so at 70%, you should be under design, and at 90%, you should be under construction. So this would be the funding to move forward in the engineering of that next phase. Wastewater collection system, number, Phase 2. There was some land acquisition that took a little longer than we expected with the original west side collection system. So it had to be broken into two phases so we could get moving right of way, right away. And this is the completion of that, and, and reallocation of the funding. And then the transfer lift station, again, is that last thing we talked about. Once it's constructed, in approximately, I believe it's about 18 months from now, that's when the older plants are decommissioned, and, and we have a new lift station there instead of two old plants. Joint participation in the CIP, this is an opportunity for us to participate and take, again, opportunity and not miss an opportunity, sorry. If some development is going to happen, and we need to upsize a water line, we need to take care of some drainage work. Does not have to just be infrastructure-related, but this does allow us to cost-participate in any CIP you can think of, to make sure we're not missing out on opportunity, and we can save money as much as possible. An example of that, we did that with West Past Drop Village. They had a 12-inch line that was required. We asked for a 24. It actually cost us about $500,000, and the overall project was just under 2 million. So there was a cost savings to the city right there. We want to be able to continue to be that flexible. So there was a cost savings to the city right there. We want to be able to continue to be that flexible. And then the wastewater master plan, lastly, is just like the Water Master Plan. We'd really like to have that wrapped up next year and have the tools that you need if people can need to come in and develop to run a model. We do understand that, hey, we wanted a 24. It would've been nice if there was a model there to make sure we didn't need a 36. So that kind of opportunity is right here for us to approve. What you have here is just-
Wait, something that, on the wastewater master plan, and I don't remember, Councilmember Plunkett, you may remember the, I'm wanting, Correx isn't done, but they should be getting close to being done. So we ought to ask BBC for an update because that could be helpful to that wastewater-
That's a good segue. We have the draft report. I think the final may have been emailed to me this week. Have not reviewed it yet. But there, there, there may be some regional opportunities that will also be addressed in this wastewater master plan.
I just want us to utilize all that information.
Again, this is the funding source summary. If you want to look at that while Tracy's up next. But that gives you an idea of where the money's coming from and at what level it's being paid for, if it's a grant or bond, et cetera.
So this summary gives you a glimpse as we move forward into the fiscal forecast of the cash, bonds, grants, and other, other funding. And so as we talk about the fiscal forecast, you'll realize, you know, how much cash out of these funds that we're, we're assuming. Do y'all have any questions before we enter the fiscal forecast? Or wait, we're doing good?
Councilmember Plunkett said he'd be writing a check. It's just not a problem at all. Yeah.
I've got plenty of checks in the checkbook. So there's got to be money there, right?
There is a, there is a fee for a return check charge. So we start out with our general fund and this is the main fund that we always think about. This is where the majority of the services of the city come out of. So I want to talk about the two main funding sources in this fund, property tax and sales tax. So property tax, we actually look at and separate and analyze existing property separate from new valuation because state legislature only allows us to go up 3.5% on the existing property side of it. Our assumptions for this fiscal forecast are that we are at 0% for '23 through '26. And you can see in line to the new property valuation, the revenue that we would get from the new valuation. I do have a preliminary for '23, so these are real numbers. '24 through '26 are projections. On sales tax, we have seen a substantial increase over last year for this year, 20%. But that is inflation that's in there. We do believe that at some point that inflation is either going to go down or it's just going to stay, it's just going to go flat. So we feel like 5% on the out-years are, is still pretty conservative. And, and if we budget based on that 5% and we bring in more than that, great. That just, you know, gives us one-time money. Some of these other items are, I'm not going to cover every single line item or we won't get out of here at six. I did want to highlight the transfer in from the electric fund. We will also talk about that when we get to the electric fund. But there has been some, some minor changes to that transfer in. And I think we've already informed y'all that the emergency management grant has been, that program has ended. And so that amount that we used to budget for is going to be eliminated in future projections.
Tracy, why don't you take just a minute because particularly Mr. Kirkland may not fully understand the EMPG and you might talk about how we've done it and-
So it's a, so Clint Nagy, our police chief, and Rosales, our fire chief, are, they both participate in the emergency management program. So this money was coming into general fund to offset their salaries a little bit. And so it just means that we, we have to cover this with, I don't know much about the program.
Okay, so let me, let me help. The, it, it was state funding. And they would give some money to the counties and they would give some money to the cities. And it could be used for your emergency management personnel. What they had, what we had chosen to do with the money, the $32,000 that we got, was we put a little bit towards the police chief and a little bit towards the fire chief because they absolutely are emergency management personnel. We always apply for that grant and it's one of those, you got to go through the hoops and you get the grant and we always generally know what it is. Ms. Waldron, being Ms. Waldron, she always makes sure that, in her opinion, those grants can go away at any day, even though the rest of us are like, "No, no, we'll get those forever." Well, we got a letter, I got a letter a little over a month ago that Chief Nim Kidd, who is over emergency management for the entire state, is no longer going to disperse money to the counties and the cities. He's going to hang on to that money. But don't wait, don't worry, it's going to be great. He's going to hire an emergency management person that's going to report to him. So the, that's, that's the short version of that. As I was speaking with Judge Poppy, he made the comment, "Well, you realize, Mayor, Chief Kidd didn't ask us for our opinion." Like it, this is a decision that has been made. It is state funds that used to go to counties and cities. It is no longer going to come. So that's why she's so showing that it's $32,000 that we would normally be getting, that we are not getting. But Chief Kidd's organization is, TIDAM, Texas Department of Emergency Management, they are now in the 254 counties going to have an emergency management coordinator that report to Chief Kidd.
Which my, my estimate is that it won't really change what we do. Like, I feel like they would still do what they've always done. So it doesn't really change what we do with emergency management. It just means we don't get the offset anymore.
I'm just trying to make sure we understand what EMPG is, why there was a grant and why it's been eliminated. I don't want anybody to think that we'd done something wrong and fallen out of favor.
No, they just changed the program.
It's a state decision. The state sometimes giveth and the state sometimes takes it away.
And we've had it for a long time since.
Yes.
And the reason why it's on here is a $32,000 negative is because-
We're losing it.
But in, in some other plan presented previously, it was included? And so that's why you're taking it away now?
Yeah, because we've only had the letter for a couple of weeks. We all thought it was still coming.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay.
So on the expense side, I want to talk about some of our, I mean, personnel is a very large part of our budget. On the compensation, we talk about COLAs and we talk about steps. And I want to point out that because of inflation, I, I have recommended a 2% COLA for '23. That's more than we have been giving in the past. But I feel like for these assumptions, we've plugged in that 2% with a 2.5% step. In out-years, it's 1% COLA with a 2.5% step. Our group insurance, we took a 7.8% increase last year. We've already been told preliminarily this year that we are looking at at least 15%. So we've plugged in 15%. We normally would average around 5% increase each year. So we go back down to 5% after that. The retirement is, we are a 6% city. And our goal is to hopefully get ourselves poised so that we can move to 7%. It has been explained to us by our police chief and our fire chief and a couple of other people that it's, it's affecting our recruitment, it's affecting our retention. And so the goal with this, these assumptions and this projection is to push our percentage each year by a full point so that in three years, we might be able to flip the switch and go from 6% to 7% and it not be this epic financial issue. If we do it slowly over time, we have called TMRS, we have talked to them about how to get ourselves in a position where we can make that move. And so those assumptions are built into this model. New positions, I won't go over all of those. Most of those were fiscal '22. We did go ahead and plug in the director of recreation because we have already brought that to council and talked to council about that. So we wanted to go ahead and include that. Burleson Crossing, our 380 agreement, from all of my best guesses and estimates, we, we may actually finish that this year, which will give 882.5 approximately back. Though, we will get those funds back. We will no longer have to pay those funds out of general fund. So that's a, that's a big positive. Vehicle to equipment and replacement, we do not have all of our vehicles paying into the replacement program. So this is a constant goal that we have to get all of our fleet and equipment in that program. So this is still working towards that goal. I think I've got it in here, by fiscal 2024, we'll have 95% of our fleet in there. We still have quite a bit of equipment to replace. And we do want to mention, we're right in the middle of our '23 budget process. So these assumptions don't include any enhancements, any new requests, anything like that. So. Going to the next page, this is just the numbers that, that have all of these assumptions built into them. I just want to point out, if you go and look kind of right in the middle, excess recurring revenue over expenses, we are, we are very healthy under these projections. We're gaining quite a bit in new value property taxes and sales tax over the last several years. At the very bottom, on the one-time expenditures, the 1.5 is additional fleet and equipment replacements that need to be bought and then put into the program. We are still very behind, not as much on our fleet, definitely on our equipment. And then the transfer to CIP matches what we've already talked about with the CIP. This is just the cash amount that we are projecting would go towards CIP.
So I, I know I'm repeating what Tracy said earlier, but it, I think it bears repeating. This, this is a very healthy fiscal forecast for the general fund and it assumes a no increase in property tax revenues for operations and maintenance.
And no budget enhancements.
And no budget enhancements, but there's, there's some room there.
Alright, the next fund we're going to talk about is the general fund debt service fund. This is the interest in sinking portion of the property tax rate. Same assumptions are made in this except the difference between this fund and general fund is that we actually get to gain the full amount of the taxable assessment in the debt service fund. So we're not limited to the increase of the appraisals. So this does take into effect the preliminary numbers that we've been given. So that the percentages that you see are those projections. And then it also reflects the new property value and the amount of money we would gain from the new property. This model assumes that we would hold our debt rate where it is and that we would use that capacity in order to issue debt to cover a lot of the things that you saw in the CIP that we just went over. So there's a little bitty 380 component with Burleson Crossing. It's only like 17,000. So it's not a real big issue. But this, this assumption is for us to sell 13 million in 2023, 9 million in '24, 9 million in '25, 9 million in '26. The interest rates that were given on these projections from the financial advisors are also present. So you can see that, of course, those, they're projecting that that's going to go up as we go through those years. So the numbers just reflect the same thing. The rate is staying the same across the top. And then we've plugged in the debt schedules for these issues that we're looking at doing. You'll notice that in '23 would just be a certificates of obligation. We're assuming that in '24, '25, and '26, those would be general obligation and they would be for street reconstruction. I've listed out on here the projects or the amount of money we've kind of pointed to that '23 CO issue, Old Iron Bridge, local contribution, Gil's Branch Grant Match, the bank stabilization, and the street rehabilitation.
So that certificate of obligation issuance would typically be a, of a shorter term, like a 10-year note compared to the general obligation issuance that the current plan is that we ask the voters to approve in November of '23. That would be a longer-term note, perhaps 30-year notes. But our plan is usually to pay off that debt in 20 to 25 years. And, and council, I'll just take you back to the CIP earlier when, when, and you guys asked the question about the difference between street maintenance and street reconstruction. For, for fiscal '23 and then again in, in fiscal '26, the idea would be, should be, that if it's a street rehabilitation project, that it's more appropriate for that to be funded with a shorter-term note. But it's fully appropriate for street reconstruction where we're building a whole new cross-section and we're doing a, a full-depth reconstruction, that that is appropriately financed through a longer-term note of, of 20 years because your improved asset will last, will last that long. Just, so that's all built into the, into the assumptions.
Tracy?
Yes?
Well, it's on my mind. I'd like to throw this out there. We talked about the streets and Trey mentioned some of the streets are retaining water. And I'm just waiting to see a street sweeper. Everybody knows what I'm talking about, a street sweeper. I can't hardly say it. But there's a lot, a lot of curbing gutters that's retaining debris and it's clogging up and the water's backing up into the streets. So I just want to throw it out there because it's on my mind right now.
And Mr. Peterson, I would think you don't care if we own it or if we contract for it. You're just saying that it's causing problems and the maintenance needs to be done.
I saw one going down the street yesterday.
Yeah, we have a street sweeper.
Well, what would be helpful is an addition of staff. And we can talk about that later to make sure somebody can run the street sweeper on a more regular basis. But yes, be happy.
Street sweeper. Time tight. Alright, the next fund that we're going to go over is water wastewater fund. This is a, a very active fund, a lot of complicated things going on in this fund. So I'll try to narrow it down. So I wanted to point out, and we've talked about this before, I mean, I use a pretty complicated rate model that I plug a lot of information into in order to provide a lot of the projections that I use in these fiscal forecasts for this particular fund. So we do estimate some growth for residential and commercial. The base rate for water, we don't assume an increase of $5 until 2024 and 2025. This is the same information that was provided on April 5th. On wastewater, we assume residential, commercial growth. I'm also trying to project the revenue that will be received when, when West Bastrop Village starts paying their wholesale rates. And so we're trying to make some projections on that as well. The base rate for wastewater has been increased several times over the last several years, with the last one being $5 in 2022. On the expense side, I'm not going to repeat all this. These are the same compensation stuff we talked about in general fund. They carry on into any fund that has personnel. And then this particular fund, you know, the biggest thing that's hitting the operating fund is how the debt is going to affect this fund. And so I have the projections in there with the rates going from 3.9 to 4.9 on the projections of the additional bond sales that will, will be needed. Here's the numbers. Just want to point out right now, the way the projections land, if you look in the middle at the net income, we are showing, you know, a positive net income. That's good. That gives us some wiggle room depending on if the revenues don't, don't make. If my assumptions are higher and we don't reach those, we've got some wiggle room there. It also has the CIP plugged in of what we are assuming that cash will pay for. You'll notice at the very bottom, our reserve requirement is 35% and we never go below or really get even close to it. So we're still looking good in that particular fund. Bastrop Power and Light, a few things to go over. The area of growth in our service territory is very limited. When Piney Creek built out, we had some projection growth to put in there. But unless there's some infill around town, there's really not much to project in growth. But unless there's some infill around town, there's really not much to project in growth for this particular service area. So I don't. We are not assuming any rate changes. The only rate change would be just the pass-through from LCRAs. So if they go up, we go up, but only for that pass-through piece. The expenses are the same as general fund for the compensation pieces. We are looking at changing the percentage, the general fund transfer percentage. And as you can see, we're at 11.1 right now, but we're looking at, that will start going down. And I'll explain why in a second. So when you look at the actual numbers, before I started manipulating that general fund transfer, Bashrop Power and Light was still seeing a significant loss every single year, recovering revenue over reoccurring expenses, which at some point, that cannot continue to occur. They have to get to the point where they're, they can be a break-even fund. As you'll see in, in the projections for 2022, we're looking at a loss of almost $205,000. But by adjusting that transfer in '23 and going forward, then you start seeing them become into the positive. They have their CIP in there, and they also have some special projects. I know right now they are going through the city and changing out all of the lights into LEDs. And that's just an ongoing project as they are able to manage it. So that's what the special project is. So their revenue reserve is also 35%. And as you can see, we stay above that in all of the out years. Any questions on this fund? Hotel occupancy tax, so I make some projections on the revenue in this fund. Where we are increasing, the projection for '22 is looking better and the planning for '23 is looking better. And then we assume that we get back up to the levels that we were at pre-COVID. So you'll see that level off. The convention center rental revenue has also been doing well. So we kind of get them back up to where they were and then that levels off as well. This doesn't make any assumptions on any new hotels coming here because I, I can't really put it in until I, until I know real information about stuff like that. So at some point, you know, we'll adjust these assumptions based on that information. On the expense side, I don't think anything really stands out too much. The destination marketing organization, our visit Bashrop, their contract adjusts with our revenue projection. So whatever that revenue projection is, that's how their contract is going to adjust. And then we make an assumption for a 2.5% increase in the administrative support each year. And that's the same for convention center and Main Street. So when we look at that fund, they are showing a net income loss this year of around 171, that's a projection. Still showing a little bit of a loss next year, but then we start seeing positive numbers after that. So we are, we are definitely going in the right direction with this fund. The reserve requirement in the policy is 50%, and we are well above that in all of these years.
So what, the $171,000 loss, honestly, depending on how the future months go, it may be wiped out if they can do, right?
This is based on projections.
Yeah, so, and, so it, it's your conservative projections is what's given, it's the best information you have right now.
Right, I've put the projections in that are actually above the budget. So I'm making projections based on where I think we're going to land, but yes, anything can change. The day I can get a crystal ball, I tell you.
Well, we've, counsel, we've talked about this before. Ms. Waldron's been a very successful CFO because she is always very conservative and you want that in your CFO. I just don't want Ms. Smith or the DMO to be having a heart attack saying, no, no, we think we're going to be doing, because they're always going to be optimistic and, you know, the truth comes out somewhere in the middle and we'll have exact, and we'll have better numbers every month.
Yes.
So, but I just wanted to make sure we noted that you're, it's a fairly conservative projection.
Yes. So last but not least, the type B fund. Some of the projections in here, their sales tax is being projected the same way that I've projected general funds. So there's no difference in that. Their rental income was changed. They did sell the 921 Main Street building, and so that income will come out of the, of the forecast. Land sales, I don't really project these. They did have a land sale, a couple of land sales in 2022, so that's reflected on here. But I don't make assumptions of further sales in future years. And this also doesn't include anything that might be a developer reimbursement or contribution to any of the capital projects that might have been funded out of debt service from the, from the B, type B funds. Personnel costs, I make a projection. Positions added to last year, they also are affected by the Burleson Crossing 380 agreement. And so they will actually gain in their budget approximately $385,000 next year and going forward. And also this establishes, they did pay off a Rosco loan and also a CO from 2018. So those, those were big items that were paid off during fiscal '22. But then we are also projecting in this model additional sales of further debt. So looking at their numbers, just wanted to point out a few things. On the city projects and programs, kind of right in the middle, that's where we're getting our numbers, pulling them from the CIP. In '25 and '26, I'm just plugging a number in there because I don't really have specific projects to point to, but there's always projects. And also, this assumes about a $20 million debt sale. So that debt service is also built into this 20. So, so anyway, the net income line is, it moves a little bit. It's pretty high in '22 and '23, then it drops down a little bit. We're basically using some reserves that year for the city project. That 1.2 was for the broadband program. So at the very bottom, I did list the projects that we're assuming for 2023 and 2024. So if you don't have any questions?
So it's, we're assuming $20 million in, in debt primarily for transportation projects from, from 4B. And is it a million two in cash, I think? In the cash, projects were to fund the preliminary engineering for the intersection projects that we've been talking about and the, the, the transportation-related proportionality analysis, the, the impact fee analysis. The, the idea here is that 4B dollars pay for that out of cash.
Cash is about 2 million, if you go back to your summary page. And that concludes the fiscal.
Okay, and that has them ending with a healthy end working capital throughout all of the years.
Yes, ma'am.
And that, that was your point of the, because they've paid off things, there's, there's a leverage opportunity there within the fund. You guys did so good. We wanted her to start at 5:30 and it's 5:40. So it is a great time if you've written down any notes, if you have some questions, but just realize that it's a snapshot based on the information that you have at the time. And every month we'll continue to get better information. You'll get a certified property tax rule. You might want to take just a quick moment. I know people are getting their love letters from the appraisal district and they're having some conniptions is the word that council member Rogers is using. But realize that there are caps within that. So your appraisals are going up, but there, there is a cap and there's many people with the homestead exemptions. There's many people who are over the age of 65. So I know there are folks out there that are saying, well, the appraisals went up 40%. So your tax rate should go down by 40% to make it. And that's just not how it, it, it all works out. So we don't have a certified number yet, but we will get that and that will be something that'll be reflected as we start getting additional information for the budget. Mr. Hoffman?
Well, and, and you're right, it, it, it does work out that way for operations and maintenance, for the, for the general fund expenses. And again, I know this is the third time we mentioned it. The, the assumption we're using here is that we, we have a no new property tax revenue approach. And as the mayor pointed out, we're also assuming no new enhancement, no new enhancements either. There will be new enhancements. We will outline those as best we can on, on May the 12th. So the, the numbers will change with recommended enhancements to the budget. But there is some, some room there. And on, on the debt side, what you heard CFO Waldron describe is that we keep the actual rate flat over the, over the five-year period that we're forecasting. That will have the impact of increasing people's property tax bills. And, and if this is ultimately what the city council approves this August and September, the, the message is for, for operations and maintenance, we're keeping, that, that, that property tax burden is, is not going up. To the extent the property tax burden is going up, is to pay for capital. Is to pay for, for new streets and, and drainage improvements along the lines of what we just described in, in the CIP. So on, on May 12th, counsel, we'll give you another version of this CIP. We'll, we'll react to some of the suggestions we heard you, you make. We'll, we'll insert, for example, a, a line item for a restroom facility at, at Ferry Park. And we'll update the, the fiscal forecast along with all of that. We'll need to carve out time on May 12th for, for you to go over the, the focus areas. Most of you have been through this before. For Mr. Plunkett and for Mr. Kirkland, you haven't been. But we'll give you a presentation on each of the, the focus areas. You get a presentation on that every quarterly report because we organize a good chunk of the quarterly report around the focus areas. And this is where we'll ask you, are, are these focus areas still things you want us to focus on? Are you comfortable with the wording, with the direction that provides? And so we'll, we'll have that conversation. I mentioned earlier that I think it's important that we spend more time on this broadband thing. That is a significant initiative that count, the city would be looking at. We do want you to understand the feasibility analysis that was done. And we've asked the consultant to be here. And if that's okay with mayor and council, we'll go ahead and schedule that. And, and finally, the other thing we'll want to make sure we spend a good amount of time on, on May 12th, is bond election planning. And I, I know I mentioned that earlier. We'll want to talk about the timeframe, when do you need to make decisions? When do you need to actually appoint a bonds committee? What deadline do you want to give them? What kind of charge do you want to get them, give them? We'll, we'll outline some thoughts on that and get your reaction to it. So that's the plan as it stands right now for May the 12th.
Is there anything that other, any other thing that folks would like to be covered on May 12? Yeah, we start, are we starting at eight? I don't recall.
Not sure, we've been that precise yet.
It's not, it's not, it doesn't say seven, does it?
It's, would you like us to start at seven?
No.
It, does 8:30 sound like a good time to start? Okay. Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Anything else that we need to cover?
So what time do Ann's reminder calls go out? If the meeting starts, it's at 8:30?
8:25. Mr. Borcos, we appreciate you being here with us this evening. Is there the one thing that we may be wanting to talk about? Is it's a little bit weird to have a statutory ETJ now that we can't do annexation? And I don't know if there's things that we need to be aware of, of changing requirements and our ability to influence that statutory, because there is still a defined statutory ETJ. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm, I know better than to ask you what you think the legislature might do next session. But, so I know we have to just go on what we know now, but that may be something that we may want to consider and be aware of. And particularly in our contract area, making sure that we're protecting the community around us because that's what allows folks' property values to maintain and, and be protected is by protecting our, our regulations and our, within our city. Okay, it is 5:45. If we don't have anything else, I will say that we are going into recess and we will be back for a restart at 6:30. And as much as everyone likes to chit-chat with each other, please give this gift of time to Colin of the 15 minutes. He's got a lot of equipment to pick up, so we really need to clear out so he can get this room swapped over for counsel. It's 5:45 and we're in recess. Today, April 26th, at 6:30, we have a quorum and I am calling this meeting to order. You guys are in for a treat tonight. We have two wonderful high school students from Cedar Creek High School. We have Sitlali Mata Hernandez and Daniel Lopez Perez. And if you guys will come forward, I want everyone to see you and I'm going to talk about you. Sitlali is a senior and she has been dancing since she was three years old. And you have to turn around so they can see you, they want to see you. And Daniel is a sophomore and he has been dancing for eight years. This is their first year to dance together. They are a part of the Cedar Creek High School Ballet Folclorico team. And they are hot stuff. We are in the presence of royalty. Cedar Creek hosted the Belista Terra and they won, the Cedar Creek team won first and second place. And last month, they were in Corpus and they won seven trophies. They won first, second, and third in the high school divisions. And if you want to know anything about the dancing, these are the people to visit with. And they want me, we're, they are going to lead us in the pledges and then they're going to share an opportunity to see them dance. So if you would please rise, we will see the, they'll lead us in the pledges.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas, Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the
And Daniel, you want to tell them about an event, right?
Yes. Good evening. I'm Daniel Lopez with.
There you go, there you go.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Lopez. I'm coming from Cedar Creek High School, from the Ballet Folclorico Orgullo Mexicano organization in our high school. And we want to tell you about our presentation that we're having this weekend, April 30th at 7:00 PM at the PAC. The one Jerry Way Film Performing Arts Center, the one down the street going towards Elgin. I'm not sure, but I think it's going towards Elgin. We will be performing with various other groups around the central Texas, including Roelosano Ballet Folclorico and Hernandez Ballet Folclorico. From our organization, we're going to have six different groups performing. Our RCD A, which is the one me and Sitlali are in, the highest class you can take at, at Cedar Creek High School. Then we have RCD B, RCD C, JBA, and JBB, and then our beginning classes. I hope you can join us this Saturday at 7:00 PM and support us.
Let's give these young people a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate that. We appreciate you guys coming out, and we look forward to supporting you on Saturday. Good luck at your next competition. It sounds like you don't really need any luck. Y'all are doing great. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand, you can leave those with the city secretary, and we'll make sure folks have an opportunity to get one on the layout. If you would please stand, Pastor Bernie Jackson is going to be giving us our invocation tonight. And Councilmember Rogers said, "I thought we were going to see him dance. You have to go Saturday night and pay five bucks to see him dance." There you go. Pastor Jackson?
Shall we pray? Almighty God, we thank you tonight for your grace and for your mercy. We come asking, God, that your will be done in this world, God, where there's so much loss and oppression and wars and rumors of wars. We ask, God, that you would teach us again how we should love our brothers and sisters the way that you love us. We thank you, God, tonight for the men and women who serve on this council and for government employees, God, that take care of the business of the city of Bastrop. We come tonight, God, thanking you for the service of Councilmember Peterson and Jackson. We thank you, God, that they thought it not robbery to put their lives on the line to serve in this community and make decisions for the people of this community. We ask that as they leave this council, God, that you will continue to give them work that will glorify you and serve your people. Tonight, God, we left out Councilmember Jackson, who is not well, and we ask that you would touch him, God, with your healing powers. Father, in the name of Jesus, this week you saw fit to receive into your eternal care Guardsman Bishop Evans. We thank you, God, for his life, and we thank you for his service. We ask, God, that you will give peace, comfort, and understanding to his fellow servicemembers and to his family. Help them to understand, God, that he laid down his life for another. Strengthen them, God, as they go through this time. Father, and then we ask that you would continue to just bless us as we work in unity in this community. Help us to recognize the gifts and talents that you've given each and every one of us. Let us all be working on one accord, God, and let us, Lord God, follow in the path of our risen Savior as we live, serve, and love one another. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Pastor Jackson. All right, council, we're to something that we only do once a year, and we have a couple of quick presentations, and we want to acknowledge the service of two folks that have given and given to this community. Colin, I think I have a slide. Not sure who we were doing. All right. Mayor Protim Peterson. So I pulled a few pictures, by no means all of the pictures, but I tried to represent the councils that you and I have served on together. And you see from the breadth of these pictures that, you know, there you are at Memorial Day. There you and your lovely wife are at the Juneteenth celebration. There you are with that gray guy, heavyset Army friend of yours, Mr. Nelson, hanging out at Veterans Day. And also the times that we've all been at the TML conferences together, the upper left-hand corner receiving the Scenic City Award together. I have so enjoyed serving with you. Colin, can you go to the one in front of the Capitol? This is a story that I have to tell. And look, apparently I own two dresses. I'm wearing the same dress. Mayor Protim Peterson was on the path of getting well, and I would assume I was not in the house since I wasn't privy to the conversation, but I'm sure Ms. Peterson was telling him, "Are you really sure you need to be walking around the Capitol right now?" And you made a comment about that I was short, but I could sure walk fast. And we covered a lot of territory. It was a cold morning. We were there in the chambers all day. And you were a trooper, and I know that that was really tough on you. And like I said, I know that you were not at 100% health.
Should have taken the elevator.
He said, "We were hitting the stairs." One of the things that I will never forget about you, I had been, I was elected in May of 2017, and it was within the first month, I called and I said, "Mr. Peterson, I need to ask you a question." And you said, "What is it, mayor? I'll help you however I can." And what I've always admired was you were immediate to say, "Yeah, I can support you on that." And you were also very professional and could say, "I'm sorry, but I can't support you on that." And I could always count on you for honesty. I could always count on your integrity of the word and always, all of your comments were always for the betterment of the community. You are, you've been referred to as the wise sage. I can't disclose what all we talk about in executive session, but let's just say there's been a rabbit trail or two that have been explored by different councils over the years. And Mr. Peterson picks up his papers and does like this, and that means we're done. We're now talking in circles, and the third time around, we don't need to be doing that anymore. And if I say, "Mr. Peterson, what do you think?" Once he speaks, we're pretty well done with the conversation. So I appreciate that you always listen. I appreciate that you and your family have been so dedicated to the community. It is an honor that you are Mayor Protim now, and I am going to sorely miss your wisdom, and I am thankful for your friendship. So I know other council members want to say some words, but we have a card for you, and we have a gift for you. And I'll let other, I'll give other council members an opportunity to speak to you, and then, of course, give you a moment to share anything that you would like to share. Councilmember Crouch, would you like to go first?
Yes, just thank you for being a great example for the other council members on this council and the other previous councils, because it seems like you've been here forever. And I appreciate your friendship and your wife's friendship and your family's friendship with me, and I'll continue to have that. So I'm glad for that, but we'll miss my time on the council with you. So best of luck to you, and I know that you're going to stay very busy.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, as a lot of you know, this, he's been my partner in crime over here to my left, and the wise man he is, he would always like, "Shh, Drew, don't say that." I'm like, "Okay, shh." So I will really, truly miss you. You have been just a guide since I started and didn't know much about what I was getting myself into, and you have really helped me. And just, you know, I just totally respect your knowledge and your outlook on the right and wrong. You know, it didn't matter how much it was going to cost or something. You were like, "Well, that's the right thing to do. We have to do it. We have to bite the bullet." So I'm just totally honored to spend time with you, and hopefully you'll come visit again.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Well, I haven't had the benefit of having as much time on the council as with you as, you know, my colleagues, but I have very much appreciated what little time I have had and with serving with you and as just a community leader. I've just always valued your opinion and really appreciate your demeanor and just, you know, can't say enough good things about you. Thank you so much.
City Manager Hoffman?
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the city staff team. Sir, from day one, you have made your appreciation and support and affection for the city staff team really apparent and obvious, and you've never, you've never wavered from that. Doesn't mean you won't point out a problem, but it is very much appreciated that you so are open with that love and affection for the city staff, and we'll appreciate that always. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Peterson, would you have anything you'd like to share?
Thank you, mayor. I don't know where to start. But anyway, I just want to say it's been my pleasure over the years to work on this council for the city of Bastrop. And I'd like to say to the citizens of Bastrop, thank you so much for allowing me to serve you for the past six years consecutively on this council. I served from '09 to '12, which is a total of like nine years I've been on this council. But this will be my last city council meeting, as y'all know. And it's been wonderful working with such people to think about the city of Bastrop. And the first thing we talk about when we sit behind this dais, even though I feel it's worth it for the $69.26 a month to do what we do, and it's been my pleasure to do so. And as you guys know, I've worked along with several different mayors over the years and during my tenure on the council and many, I've lost count of how many council members. But it's been, it's been a learned experience for me to work with the city of Bastrop and all the city of Bastrop. And as the city manager said, working with staff, because, and I've got to give it to him, he put together a great staff to represent the city of Bastrop. So thank you, Paul. But let me, I talked about all the council members, but let me say a little bit of something about the lady that's sitting next to me. She has, with all the city managers, I mean, city mayors I work for, Mayor Schrader was the cream of the crop because she was instrumental in getting many, many projects done for the city of Bastrop, and I was glad to be proud of it. You bet. And, you know, and just to name a few projects that she was instrumental on or headed, spearheaded, was our drainage improvements, which we definitely needed, our water system improvement, got a new wastewater plant coming on Highway 304, which is definitely needed by the city, a new water tower on Highway 20, and introduced farm-based code to manage growth in Bastrop, which we all care about Bastrop and don't want the growth to get out of hand. And that was a nice thing, a very nice thing to do for the citizens of Bastrop, is not overdo it and be behind on our infrastructure and things like that. By the way, I've got to say this. I am so proud, very proud, to have my name on this building, because I used to work in a dungeon downtown. And my name's on the convention center across the street, which a lot of people thought it was a bad idea, but look at it now. It's really, really working for the city of Bastrop. I just want to say to incoming council members, I want you guys to please, please, think about the people of Bastrop that you've sworn to represent. And when you sit on this dais, when you make those decisions that impact them, so think about the people of Bastrop and continue to move forward for the city of Bastrop and for the greater good of Bastrop. Thank you. Bill Peterson out. And I left out my beautiful family out there, most of them are here. Thank you, guys.
Good. I was about to help you out with that one. We also would like to recognize Councilmember Jackson. You can imagine that he is really not feeling well, or he would be here tonight. And Councilmember Jackson was first elected to council in 1988. He has served on and off the council for a number of terms since then. This term, he came in on 2019 and is completing this one single term. There's some pictures of him. Councilmember Rogers, you'll remember when we, that was one of the Christmas parties for TML. We also, I use the Scenic City Award picture again because we had Mayor Protim Peterson and Councilmember Jackson both there, and there's not a whole lot of pictures of all of us all together, and I was glad to have that one. Councilmember Jackson and I have a very great relationship with each other. It is wonderful that we can speak plainly with each other, speak directly, and I have respect. He has given a lot to the community. He's very dedicated to the history of the community, and I'm appreciative of that. And I am very appreciative of Pastor Jackson including prayers for his recovery. Many of you that know him, that man has been through it with the sinuses. Mayor Protim Peterson and I both spoke with him today, and we were doing the, should we send Chief Nagy to take him to the hospital? I mean, he is not doing well, so we truly hope that he gets to feeling better. And I feel like if he was well enough to watch, he'd be here. So he may not be watching live, but I know he will watch it later. So I want to give council an opportunity to thank Councilmember Jackson for his years of service and dedication. Councilmember Crouch, would you like to go first again?
Yes. Thank you, Doc, wherever you're at. For all of your service, you've served Bastrop for a long, a long time, and not just as a council person, but as just a citizen, and have helped a lot of things with the car center and just different things in the community. And another great example for us to follow as council people. So I appreciate my friendship with Doc also, and then all the time and service that he's put into the community is just a real great example of what you can do for your city.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Peterson?
Thanks, mayor. First of all, get well, Doc. We all care about you, and we think about you quite a bit. I'm glad you called me today. But Doc Jackson's on the city council before I knew what a city council was. He's been instrumental in Bastrop, in Bastrop community for a long, long time, and I'm sure he's not done yet. So just want to wish you well, Doc. Get better. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, Doc, we've known, we've known each other for many years, from the downtown, all the events we used to do and haul the benches around together, to just doing all sorts of events and things for the city. What I remember the most when I think about Doc on the dais is his passion for the parks. You know, anything that we're talking about, the parks, he knows everything, the ins and outs. He can tell us how to get it done, and he has the knowledge. So I really appreciated that on several levels with him being on the dais. So get feeling better, Doc.
Thank you. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, Doc, you know, I just appreciate your volunteerism, your dedication to music and history, you know, two of my favorite aspects of life in Bastrop. And yeah, can't wait to see you back up here. Thank you.
City Manager Hoffman?
So I knew of Councilmember Jackson long before I ever came to Bastrop, largely because of his very active role with the Texas Municipal League in several capacities, including leadership capacities. And give credit to Councilmember Jackson and Mayor Schrader for ensuring that the city of Bastrop is very plugged into all of the resources and educational opportunities provided by the Texas Municipal League. Not every city is as plugged in as the city of Bastrop is, so credit for all of that. He too has been a real friend to me and other city employees, and wish him very well in his future endeavors, and thanks for his leadership here on city council.
Let's give Doc a standing ovation as well. It's 6:53, and we're going to go into recess for a very brief reception. I hear there's yummy cookies and something to drink, and we're going to take 10 minutes or so, give an opportunity to shake hands with Mayor Protim Peterson, and we'll be back in a few minutes. It's 6:53, and we're in recess. Colin, are we, are we good? All right. It is 7:03, and we are back in regular session. We are on Item 6B, mayor's report. Report. Colin, you can jump into the first page. This is the things that I did between August, April 8th and April 21st. On the left-hand side, you'll see I was asked to be a panelist for the Institute for Leadership and Capital Projects. I am standing with former Representative Larry Gonzalez. And the young man to my, in the right of the picture, is Cameron Goodson. He is the Economic Development Director at Leander. And we were asked lots of questions, and I had a good time. It's always fun to sit on a panel with folks. The upper right hand, you'll see, I was double booked for Sandy's Southern Spice Boutique Ribbon Cutting. So, I couldn't be at the ribbon cutting, so I went early to visit with Sandy and tell her that I was, why I was going to miss the ribbon cutting. And she has that little building that's over behind where Bassano's used to be, off Tahitian, and she is a hoot. And I promise that you will find something that you like at her store. Really, another neat little new business here in Bastrop. In the middle of the picture, you will see the Bastrop Middle School Mini Soccer Pitch. That was a ribbon cutting from a couple of Fridays ago, and you can see there are kids playing from all ages. It's a little bit of a sobering experience for me. The gentleman that is farthest to the right, I have known since his mom was bringing him in a carrier to the soccer fields, and he's now taller than me and said, "Miss Connie, it's so good to see you." And it's just one of those like, oh, time is flying by. But the mini pitch is getting used nonstop. They, the school's putting the lights on. The lights go off at 10 o'clock to get the kids to go home so that they're on time for school the next day. But they had a tournament going that afternoon, and several of you know Abena Asante with St. David's, and they were a part of the funding for the mini pitch, the mini soccer pitch. So, it was a really neat event. And the Bastrop Opera House always has great plays going, and one of their recent plays that was put on by the Teen Academy was 15 Reasons Not to Be in a Play. It was a very cute play, and that's not just because my grandson was one of the 15 reasons, and he enjoyed being in that as well. And then you'll see that Youth Career Day, man, oh, man. And our fire, several of our firefighters were out there. Youth Career Day was last Wednesday, and for the first time, they brought the elementary school kids. I have to be real careful with kids not to get any of their faces. That's why it's the back of the kids and the fire truck. And then the police, police department had a booth that was inside. There were several vendors that were there looking for summer interns and really just trying to get the kids exposure to different types of careers and jobs that are available right here in Bastrop. So, I really enjoyed doing that. Colin, if you go to the next page, I did all of these things, and I will have pictures about Spring Fest, and many of you were out there. That was the first time they'd done that program, and it was just a great success, and I was really glad I got to be a part of that. And then on the upcoming events, Colin, you can go to the next page. This is what I'll be doing between now and our next council meeting. We'll have some additional conversation about the Best Warrior Event that will be going on soon. And several of you will be at Table on Main on Sunday night. And it's already the 1st of May, and there's a lot of things that happen the first week of the month. So, I would encourage you to participate in those things. That is my mayor's report, and I'm going to start on this end for city manager report, city council reports. Councilmember Plunkett, do you have anything for us this evening?
Just that I really enjoyed the disc golf course opening last week. That was a, that's a, and I actually took the kids out and played the course on Saturday, Sunday, and it's hard.
I was going to say, are you going to share the score with us?
No.
No. Okay.
Lost count on most of the halls individually. So, but also, we've been working really hard, especially Rhonda Gannon, our general manager. She's the chair of the Table on Main event, and she's been working really hard putting it together. It's going to be a great event. Look forward to seeing everybody out there.
I'm looking forward to it. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. The week's been well. We had a historical landmark commission meeting. And I'll tell you what, those folks do a lot of hard work, a lot of investigating. My hat goes off to Jennifer Bills. She handles that group pretty well with some really detailed things to keep all our historical homes in line. And other than that, I just had a great week.
Excellent. Mayor Pro Tem Peterson?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Just briefly, I also went out to the, the
Golf disc?
Golf disc. Thank you. And I'm surprised at the turnout. It's a lot of people showed up out there, and it was, it was just a great day. And it's also fun watching a mayor trying to hold that plaque because they would stay on the easel because the wind about blew away. I thought we'll have to go catch it. But it was a great day out there, and the kids, they did a remarkable job. I mean, they had a little one out there throwing that disc around like it wasn't nothing. But that's going to be a nice park for the community of Bastrop. And I did not realize that that many people were interested in, in that type of golf. And I didn't know until the mayor told me. They've got putters, drivers, and any kind of golf club you play in regular golf, they've got it in a disc. I said, "That's amazing." I did not know that. But had fun out there. Thank you.
It was a lot of fun. It was windy that day, but it was a lot of fun. Councilmember Crouch?
I, I just wanted to recognize Bastrop as a sportsman's paradise now because we have the Frisbee Golf, which I didn't get a chance to go. I was double or triple booked that day, but I would love to have gone to that. Also, the rec center, if you haven't been to the rec center to work out, you need to go. You can stay by yourself and work when they close at 7:00. And then you can stay, because they have a key swipe on the door, and you can stay and work out if you need to work after that. And then the pickleball courts are all, at Tahitian Village, are all getting resurfaced. So, if you're interested in pickleball, I know Gary's not sitting in here, but would enjoy the plug for pickleball at Tahitian Village now is where it's, part of it, where it's going to move to. So, any kind of sport in Bastrop, you can play now here. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Sportsman's paradise. I like that. All right, we're on Item 6D, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to make quick mention of last Wednesday's Youth Career Day put on by BISD, and we were very happy to participate in that. We actually had several tables set up for young people to visit who might be interested in a career with the city. And, and to that point, the photograph that's on the screen to the top left, in the afternoon that day, there were three separate sessions where several city employees served as a, as a panel and presented the opportunity to high school kids of a career in, in city government, and emphasized just how rewarding that can be and how diverse a set of disciplines can, can find an enjoyable and productive and comfortable career with, with, with local government. ACM Rebecca Gleason, ACM Trey Jobe, Police Chief Clint Nagy, and Fire Chief Andreas Rosales participated in those sessions. And the session, I actually sat in for a few minutes. Our, our Officer Tamara McIntyre actually substituted for, for Chief Nagy. They all, they all did a great job. The, the group participated very well, and the one I, I sat in on, they had great questions. Your, your, your city staff really did a good job of presenting the, the picture of what's possible and did it in a fun and informative way. I was really, really proud of them. Thanks, Colin. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And speaking of city employees and starting a career with us, Council, you know that you approved the addition of some critically important additional firefighter positions a few months ago. And Chief Rosales and HR Director Tanya Cantrell worked awfully hard to make sure that process went smoothly. We had a whole lot of really great and qualified candidates apply for the job. The three folks we hired are, one of them is Ben Gonzer. Ben is actually with us today. Ben has been a volunteer with the Bastrop Fire Department, and he is currently still an EMT with Acadian, the EMS service that services Bastrop County. And as a matter of fact, earlier this week, the county extended that contract for three years. And as I understand it, Ben is going to hold down both responsibilities, and I think that's a real benefit to us. Not in the room, but the gentleman on the right is Daniel Lucas. And Mr. Lucas comes to the Bastrop Fire Department from serving the Savannah, Georgia Fire Department for a while. He and his wife and young child live in Lockhart, and Daniel is trained in swiftwater rescue, which can come in handy here in, in Bastrop. And, and the person on the left in the picture is Morgan Laberan. Morgan is a Bastrop High School graduate. He has also been a volunteer with the Bastrop Fire Department, and most recently, he was with the Bryan, Texas Fire Department. So, we're getting some young, energetic, smart, experienced young people to, to do really important work for the city of Bastrop. Thanks, Colin. And Council, you will meet again in regular session on May the 10th. And highlights on that agenda are the, the mayor is scheduled to make some board appointments, or the mayor's made appointments. We're asking council to confirm them. We will have a reception honoring new councilmember Cheryl Lee and John Kirkland. And we will present our next quarterly report. This is a report for the second quarter covering the period January through March. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Council, any questions for Mr. Hoffman? All right. We're going on to our proclamations, and we are very honored tonight to have Command Sergeant Major Michelle Thompson with us. And this proclamation is about the Best Warrior Competition, and we must recognize our, our very own representative at the county commissioners, and that is the County Commissioner of Precinct One, Mel Hamner, is with her this evening. And those of you, if you have ever met Commissioner Hamner, in about the first minute, you'll find out that he's retired Army and is a
Air Force.
Air Force. I was looking at that guy.
Like somebody saying Marines retired.
There you go. Sorry, sorry about that. I guess I'm looking at, at Mr. Nelson back there.
Wasn't that the Army Air Force when he was in it?
Oh, oh. That was good. That was good. Yeah, yeah. Whew. I'll try to recover from that one. Very supportive of all branches of the military, and we appreciate, you will always see him at Memorial Day. You'll always see him at Veterans Day and doing what he can to raise awareness and raise funds for all of the veterans, and we appreciate the hard work that he does. But today, we're going to talk about the Best Warrior Competition, and I have a proclamation. Whereas the Best Warrior Competition is an annual statewide and international event that will take place the 2nd of May through the 6th of May at Camp Swift Training Center in Bastrop. Whereas this friendly, I don't know how friendly it is, but it says friendly, so I'm saying that. This friendly contest puts the best soldiers and airmen from all National Guard units within the state of Texas, along with soldiers from the countries of the Republic of Chile, Czech Republic, and against each other to win the best non-commissioned officer and the best junior enlisted for both the Army and Air National Guard. The U.S. winners of these four categories go to regional competition and hopefully on to represent the state of Texas at the national competition. The honor of the winners, their families, employers, and supporters. The Texas Army National Guard Senior Enlisted Advisor, Command Sergeant Major Michelle L. Thompson, will hold a banquet on May 6, 2022. Now, therefore, we, the city of Bastrop, welcome the Best Warrior Competition to Bastrop County and appreciate the presence of the Texas National Guard in our county and encourage our citizens to support this event by welcoming these guardsmen into their businesses and our grateful community. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Bastrop, Texas to be affixed this day of April. Command Sergeant Thompson, do you have anything you would like to share with the folks this evening?
Do I have to push a button or anything?
Yeah, I think you're on.
All right. So, this isn't the first year that we've been able to host the Best Warrior in Bastrop, and we continue to come back. Most of that is in part to Mr. Hamner. And if my memory serves me right, I met you in 2011.
When you were first sergeant.
Yes, I was taller. But community support really helps our soldiers and our airmen because they are citizen soldiers and airmen. And your continued support, spiritual support, that's why we continue to support all of the endeavors of our communities during floods, pandemics, that's enough of that, high water and drought and fires. So, I just want to say thank you to all of you. Absolutely. Thank you to Mr. Hamner for helping us, and I just look forward to continuing to build that relationship. We do have, bring in a lot of traffic sometimes through your little town, and I apologize for that, but our soldiers are so excited to visit your businesses. And everyone is so welcoming, and they do say thank you for your service. And we don't have that in every community in Texas. I have to tell you that. So, thank you so much for supporting us, for supporting the loss of our soldier as well this evening. That's so important for that family and my military family as well. But I just want to say thank you so much, and we will be back next year too.
Thank you. We are looking forward to having you. Now, you have to give them an idea of what they do in the competition, because I've been there towards the end of one, and just a, just a quick summary.
So, quick summary, we start out with a board. So, that's people like me asking 20-some-year-old soldiers 10 million questions, rapid fire, and they get scored on their responses. While they're in their dress uniform, immediately following that, they have to do nighttime land navigation. So, they have to find points in the middle of the night or, and then into the morning. From there, they go into a water event, which we will have at Bastrop Lake State Park. From there, they will do a 12-mile ruck march. So, we keep them extremely, extremely busy. In the midst of that, they also have to do some other soldier tasks, fire their weapons, call in a nine-line medevac, and things like that. So, they're extremely busy. It's a compressed 60 hours, and they are extremely exhausted when they're done. And we will, on the 6th, they get to celebrate with food at the Southside Market, who have opened their doors to us to allow us a place to celebrate because we're working on what's going on at Camp Swift. We weren't going to be able to have a banquet this year. So, thank you to Southside and Mel and everyone else that has helped us make this even possible this year.
So, Councilmember Plunkett, you want to run the traps with them there, do you?
I better not.
Let's give her a round of applause, and Colin's going to take our picture. All right. We're moving Totally understand. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Drive careful.
Yes, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Hamner. All right. We're on to Item 6F, which is recognizing our public servants. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city level, these unsung heroes do the work that keep our nation working. Public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. Many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. Without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials, like we did this very evening. We did a part of that. Now, therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 1st through the 7th as Public Service Recognition Week. City Manager Hoffman, I'd like you to accept this on behalf of all of the public servants. Let's give them a round of applause. Let's give them a round of applause. So I didn't wear high enough heels.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, you guys have held in there long enough. All right. We're moving on to our next one, which is one of my favorites, International Firefighters' Day. International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on May 4th to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those who have served in this line of work, and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve. Firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspires them to help colleagues, neighbors, and strangers alike. At a moment's notice, thousands of firefighters, both career and volunteer, risk their lives every day by quickly responding to uncertain situations to mitigate danger through such efforts as search and rescue, hazardous materials response, and combating the threat of destructive fire in order to protect individuals, families, and the economic being of our community. Whereas firefighters make the ultimate sacrifice to protect the citizens they serve, whether danger is the result of natural or man-made disasters, as witnessed by fire suppression deaths and other contributing causes. Now, therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 4th Firefighters' Day in Bastrop, Texas. Chief Rosales, you have several folks low. Everybody come forward. Let's give them a round of applause.
Sure, I could introduce everybody. So we'll start down here. Firefighter Chris Stone, he's one of the full-timers. Firefighter Judah Ross, correct. Judah just joined us. He's one of our volunteers. He just joined, what, two weeks? A month? Oh, a little more. Firefighter Aaron Stradlin, he is actually a full-time for ESD II in the county. And then he volunteers for us here in the city. Firefighter Wayne Arnold, almost said Matt. Matt is his son. Matt is one of our full-timers. And then Wayne is dad. And we call them brothers because they look identical. So he'll love that. He's one of our volunteers. Firefighter Ethan Perry is one of our full-timers. And then we met Ben. Ben is one of our new full-timers. He just started. This is what, third shift? Third shift? Yeah. So, and then myself. Again, I would like to say, though, thank you, Council, everybody, for, one, supporting us, and, two, allowing us to grow. We are tremendously appreciative. It's great to work with all of these guys. And anybody that does want to volunteer, we absolutely are always taking volunteers. Volunteers are highly important to us. And they, as you see these guys, they definitely couldn't do it without the full-timers. There's only three on today. So the rest of us are supported by the volunteers. Thank you, guys.
All right. Council, we also, as a part of our participation with CAPCOG, we are recognizing Air Quality Awareness Week. Several of you know that we have a monitor in Bastrop County. Part of why we do that is as that little sister city west of us grows, when they have attainment issues, instead of us being sucked into that and having additional obligations, we have the ability to have good data for Bastrop County. We are thankful for our participation within CAPCOG. And we are happy to have the ground-level ozone information that we need. And May 2nd through the 6th is Air Quality Awareness Week. And then one of the other services, and quite frankly, one of the main services that CAPCOG provides, they have more people in the aging, aging of adults division of CAPCOG than they do in any other area. And I didn't really realize that. So they are focused on making sure that older Americans, and I don't even want to ask them how old that is, because I think I'll be disappointed when I hear the number. But they know that if people can age in place, if they can stay healthy, if they can get healthy food, if they have access to healthcare and have transportation, that the entire community benefits from that. And so it, May is Older Americans Month. And we want to recognize that also as a part of our membership with CAPCOG. Mayor Pro Tem Peterson is fairly certain he might possibly be in that category. That gets us to staff and board reports. And the first thing that we have, Council, we're on item 8A, received presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending March 31st. And we have CFO Waldron. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A quick summary, pretty much everything is going according to forecasts and plan. So unless you have some questions about my reports, we are overforecasting general fund revenue. There's a few funds that we're keeping an eye on, but we report on these each month, the impact fees. It's all about development and timelines. All of the expenses are within our forecasts. If you have any questions for me.
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron? Councilmember Rogers?
Great job on the sales tax. Keep it up. You just keep it up, girl.
It's all me.
Yeah, and hotel tax, too. Good job.
Which brings us to our next report. They're very excited about the rise in hotel occupancy tax. Item 8B, received mid-year report from Visit Bastrop. Director?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thank you for having us and giving us the opportunity to share the successes of our mid-year report. I'd also like to thank Carrie Fussler and Tom Dickey, who are here from our executive team on the Board of Directors, and also Kristy Hun, who is our marketing coordinator who came out tonight. So, let's see. So briefly, but yet with a little bit of detail, we're going to talk about some of the highlights. So this is what we told you in August, what we were planning on doing this year. And this is the results to date of where we are with those commitments that we made to you with different KPIs and different goals. So our marketing highlights generated coverages and PR outreach. It's basically, that's just our outreach to media to encourage them to write about us. And then media alerts is another way that we engage with the media, but mostly that's through news, broadcasts, events, like things like the car show, the Corvent Invasion, Patriotic Festival. So we are ramping up for the season. First quarter and second quarter tend to be a little quieter for us. Third and fourth quarter will be very busy. So we're pretty pleased with the number of pitches that we've already received at the mid-year point. And our media alerts basically happen as we have different events. Highlights here that I'd like to point out is that we're halfway through the year, and then we're more than halfway to our goals. So we're completely on point with all of our KPIs for the website, which is obviously the biggest marketing tool that we have. It's the number-one resource for all things Bastrop. And we did not have a KPI for visitor guide distributions, and we did not commit to anything in August. But I wanted to point out that we have already distributed over 9,000 guides from October to now. And just wanted to let you know about that. So we distribute them through a third party in San Antonio and Galveston, hitting the Houston market. And those are over 100 different locations in each one of those particular cities. Let's see. Social media, we're a little low on Facebook engagements and Instagram followers. We're right on target. This is, again, I spoke with Ashton about this. This is, again, it's a seasonality. We're expecting much more growth in Q3 and Q4. Also, last year, we had some additional funding, so we were able to put some money towards some paid Facebook engagements. This year, we did not. So we pulled back on that a little bit. I expect that to meet the forecast by the end of the year. These are some highlights. These are things that we're talking to the media about. So going back to our PR pitches that I mentioned earlier, each month when we do a pitch, these are some of the things that we talk to the different news outlets about, and we pitch about Bastrop. These are not always necessarily picked up, just so everyone knows that. But these are the type of conversations that we're having with the media. And those are the folks that we're having the conversations with. Also, your next few pages in your packet will show some links to the coverage of the highlights, highlights of the coverage that we have secured. They're not up here. There's about five or six pages. I recognize one page is a duplicate. And so you can click on that within your packet or online, and everyone can just kind of take a look for themselves at the different coverage highlights that we have by month. I'm not going to go through them individually, so in the essence of time. This is basically some screenshots of some of our coverage we sourced. This was sourced from Visit Bastrop. We would like to highlight one of them, which is the Texas Town and City. Did you bring it? Yay! The mayor provided a quote, and we were fortunate to get the cover. Visit Bastrop received the cover, or Bastrop did. They accept five to eight stories, and we were selected, and we were one of the first stories in the actual guide. If anyone wants autographed copies, we're happy to provide them. We're very excited about that. Sales, sales are actually doing really great. We amped up our efforts with the convention center. We set some small goals there in August because we weren't sure what to expect. We've actually kind of blown those goals out of the water at the mid-year point with the convention center sales. So that's going really well. Our annual definite goal of 28, and we are, I'm sorry, for the leads, and then our mid-year definite results are 29, with a mid-year goal of, where am I? Yeah, mid-year convention center results are nine. I'm sorry. Mid-year definite results are 29. So we feel very confident with that. The convention center sales are going great. Everything is going gangbusters with that. We're finding that it's really, we're booking two to three years out because everything is so booked right now. So we're really happy with that success. So all of this leads us to where are we with our year-to-date in our mid-year economic impact? And the economic impact for the mid-year for this year, we're at 5.5 million. Last year, we were at 3.4 million. So the economy is coming back. Our hoteliers are all forecasting higher, higher results than 2019 in the upcoming year. So the pent-up demand is for real. This is the budget that we presented to you in August. The only change to this budget has been the budget amendment with the additional $172,000 that Ms. Waldron presented to Council. The only difference on this budget is that. And then the decrease, where that decrease has come in is what we've just taken from, what we had put out in cash on hand to make that dealt, to meet that. So that's where the difference is. You'll see in the first two line items. And then we also chatted with you about different revenue enhancement plans, our Destinations International accreditation. We submitted the application on April 1st with all of us sitting around the computer, hitting the send button. It was quite a process. It is with the review staff right now at DMAP headquarters. They have 30 days to look it over. They'll get back to us if they need additional information. And then it will go to their Board of Directors with Destinations International, and they will decide if we have met the standards. They have 20 standard, they have inspirational standards at the end, or aspirational, I should say. And in order to be a destination with, to be a destination with highest achievement, I can't think of the word, you have to have at least 10 of those completed. And we completed all 20.
Wow.
So we were very happy. It was a really, I can't even extend enough thanks to the staff. They, we, it's quite a project, but it'll be worth it in the end. Advocacy efforts continue as we work with THLA, Texas Hotel and Lodging Association, on hospitality issues during legislation. The downtime website is complete in terms of the design. We're now working on migrating the content over, and we're targeting June 1st for that. And the transfer to, from the convention center has happened. Safe, clean, and ready. We're kind of backing off a little bit for a few months on that. We still have a place on our website page, but it's not going to be front and center. So, but we still want to make a commitment to those planners that we are still a safe, clean, and ready location. The discount card is going great. On the horizon, these are some of the things that we, again, told you that we were going to accomplish this year. There's only a few that you can see up there that's on hold. One is the conversion, I'm sorry, not the conversion study, but the sustainable tourism. And that's something that we're working with City Manager Hoffman and Assistant City Manager Gleason on as we move forward. So we had a plan, they have a plan, so we're going to just kind of put those plans together. So we may have it completely accomplished by this year, but the city is working on a five-year plan that we get to be a part of. So I think that'll be a great partnership. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Great job. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, wasn't there some unitals that we need to talk about?
Thank you. I received my certification as a Certified Destination Management Executive, which is the highest educational standard accreditation you can receive as an individual in our industry.
Yay! Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And what a wonderful report. You got, your goals were there. You've done a great job by kicking them.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job out there. So we appreciate it, all us businesses, I know.
Thank you.
And I, the accreditation, I can remember conversations when we were very first talking about a destination marketing organization. And that is a long time coming and was an aspirational goal from the foundation and the formation of the organization. And congratulations on getting that completed.
Thank you.
To you and your board and your employees. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Good job. All right, Council, that brings us to the top of page three, and that is citizen comments. We have two folks signed up for citizen comments tonight. The first one is Butch Carmack. Did I pronounce that correctly? Mr. Carmack, if you will please come forward and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
All right. My name is Butch Carmack. I live at 284 Okaloa in Tahitian. Most of you know me, those of you don't. And Doc, wherever you are. I came to speak with y'all about the ongoing problem that we've got up in Pine Forest Unit 6 up there. And the problem we keep having is that people are coming from out of town camping up there. And they're having wild, or not wildfires, campfires. And a lot of open flames going on up there. And I think I speak on all of Tahitian that we don't want our neighborhood burnt down again. I guess I'm asking that log enforcement just simply make a lap through there a couple of times on the weekends and make sure people aren't camping up there. I mean, if you go on YouTube, there's a jillion YouTube videos on off-roading in Bastrop, Texas. You've got to word it differently, but there's, I guarantee you, there's 50 YouTube videos on off-roading in Bastrop, Texas. So it's basically the people coming from out of town. There was a group came from Louisiana last year, camped out up there. It's the people coming from out of town with their RVs and their tents. Two weeks ago, I was up there, probably 100 people in there camping. Campfires going all over the place in the middle of a drought. So I'm simply letting you guys know what's going on up there. I understand that you can't keep everybody from coming in there, you know, riding because there's so many different ways to get in there. But it's the main people coming in that main entrance right off the highway that are camping and causing potential catastrophic fire. Drew, you're going to be the first one in trouble. So that's all I really had to say, and wanted to thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Carmack. Since it's citizens' comments and it's not posted, we can't really have a discussion about it. But we can certainly, as Council, tell our city manager that we have an expectation that he work with our police chief and that we do everything that we can. And he'll let us know if he needs counsel to help him with any of that. But appreciate you coming and speaking, and absolutely, we need to get on top of that. So that's for you. All right. The second person we have signed up to speak tonight is, Colin, we're about to lose the little TV. I don't know if we care, but it's about to go night-night. The second person we have signed up to speak is Jay Howard. Mr. Howard, if you please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to address. to address council tonight.
Uh, yes, Jay Howard with Texas Disposal Systems, and our business address is 12200 Carl Road in Creedmore. I have shared a little bit about our company in the past. Texas Disposal Systems, we're a, a family-owned and operated solid waste and recycling company located just about 30 minutes up the road. Um, our understanding is that the city's solid waste services contract, uh, is potentially up for renewal this year, and I'm not sure if there's been any discussion about whether or not to open it up to a competitive bidding process, but I just wanted to stop by again to deny it and say, if you do, we're very much interested in participating. Uh, our company does business with about 35, uh, other municipalities in and around central Texas, uh, and, and many of those cities utilize and benefit from the integrated business model that we've developed that allows them to offer their residents and businesses more services. Um, some of the things we do in some of our city partners, uh, is green waste services, so all of the, the brush and yard waste that's collected at homes, rather than being transported and buried in a landfill, comes to our facility where we process that into compost and mulch and soil blends that those cities in turn use on their public spaces and in their parks. Uh, we also have a full-service disaster relief division to our company. Many of our cities, uh, cities have, uh, clauses in their contract that allows them access to resources such as restroom trailers, laundry trailers, uh, shower trailers, the fencing, the lighting, the generators that you would need in the event of a disaster when people get displaced from their homes. Uh, we also have, uh, green events, uh, services, which is a part of our company, where city festivals and, and events, rather than just having trash cans where all the waste that's collected goes to the landfill, again, uh, we actually collect the recyclables and the compostable, food waste and so on separately, and at those events, we're able to provide reports back to the city where they can display on their website that we were able to divert, you know, 50, 60, as much as 70% of the waste from those events away from the landfill. We do the same thing in our schools, where we have a program called Eco Academy, where the, we have a K through 12 te- approved curriculum that the teachers can teach in their classrooms, and in the lunchrooms, and in the, uh, classrooms, we have the ability to recycle, and all that food waste is diverted away from the landfill as well. So a lot of things that we'd love, if there was a competitive bidding process, to, to talk more with you all about, and, again, if you do go that direction, we're just very much looking for, look forward to competing for the city's business. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Howard, appreciate you being here tonight. All right, council, we are moving on to the consent agenda. We have items 10A through 10E. Thank you. Is there, does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull 10B, please.
10B, okay. And is anybody in the audience want to pull any item from the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you will, please read the consent agenda without 10B.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 10A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the April 12th, 2022, regular meeting and April 19th, 2022, special meeting. Item 10C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-43 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, designating authorized signatories for contractual documents and documents for requesting funds pertaining to the 2021 Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, contract number CDV 21-0276, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 10D, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-45 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, committing the city to provide local matching funds to secure and complete the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Applications, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 10E, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-46 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the submission of Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Applications and appointment of the mayor and city manager as the chief executive officers and authorized representatives to act in all matters in connection with the FEMA mitigation contract, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by councilmember Rogers and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Peterson. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, council, that portion of the consent agenda is approved unanimously. We'll now take item 10B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-42 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, adopting various policies and procedures required in conformity with the Civil Rights Act and the Fair Housing Act, as shown in Exhibit A, required under the 2021 Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, contract number CDV 21-0276 through the Texas Department of Agricultural, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, point out the fact that, uh, the resolution read as though, it could have been read as though we were being, you know, forced to do these things, but I also wanted to point out that I believe these things are, are doable and, and should be done, not only because of those requirements, but also because it fits our values and it's the right thing to do. So I would move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from councilmember Plunkett?
Second.
And a second from councilmember Rogers. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Peterson?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Councilor, on, uh, page four, items for individual consideration, item 11A, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2022-13 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, adopting amendments for Chapter 8, Signs, Section 8.4.001, Standards for Temporary Signs B, Banner Signs of the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, adopted by reference in Chapter 14.01 of the Code of Ordinances, as attached in Exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact, adoption, repeal, or severability, and enforcement, and establishing an effective date. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. Uh, so at the last meeting, um, we, uh, brought forward amendments requested by council that had been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission related to banner signs. Um, that banners, um, get, increased the amount, a banner could be up from two weeks at a time, um, up to, uh, four times a year, to, you could have one banner for the entire year. One of the, some of the feedback that we received at that meeting, uh, was that, um, to be more specific in the language, the banner needed to be the same size as that, of what, as was originally permitted, so, um, because there are size requirements in the code that relate to total size of the banner, but also size that can take up on a, on a specific building, so we do have to review that each time. So if you're going to swap out the banner over the year, it needs to be the same size or smaller. Uh, so the specific language now reads, um, at a single location for a maximum of one year, the banner can be changed within the permitted period, as long as the banner location on the site does not change or exceed the sign area or dimensions on the approved permit. So, any questions?
Council, any question for Ms. Bills?
I move to.
Okay, we're going to say, uh, I think I saw Drew's light first, so I've got a motion from councilmember Rogers and a second from councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council, the motion passes unanimously. We will now be going into executive session on the following item, item 12A, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interests associated with, one, the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three at 385 State Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas, 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. Number two, acquisition of real property rights to provide utility service to the Veridian Development, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. And number three, acquisition of right-of-way for the extension of Agnes Street related to the Agnes Street Hazardous Mitigation Grant, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. It is 7:53, and we are in executive session. All right, it is 8:32, and we are out of executive session. On item number 13, uh, there is no action as a result of executive session. That brings us, for the final time, to item 14, Mayor Pro Tem Peterson.
Thank you, mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Mayor Pro Tem Peterson and a second from councilmember Rogers. It's 8:32, we are adjourned, everyone be safe tonight. Thank you.